Parking study.
Yes, sir. As council, I believe you are aware, the city is undergoing an update to our 2018 parking management study for the downtown area. It's being conducted by Rick Williams consulting. They are the preeminent firm that deals with parking and parking issues. We've invited him to provide a brief update to the council and answer some brief questions. Again, they are only about halfway through their process at the moment. But we thought it'd be prudent to give an update as there were questions about various aspects to our parking program. At the last council meeting, I figured would be best addressed by Rick and his team. So no further ado, I'll turn it over to Rick and Rick, you can feel free to share your screen to share that PowerPoint.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. And good evening. It's nice to be here. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to present to you. I'm gonna share my screen. And and you, can you see that, Shelby?
We do not.
No, not yet.
But I have the presentation that you need to share my screen.
Could you do that then Shelby? I've had this problem before with Zoom, so I don't want to delay anything. So I would appreciate that.
Not a problem.
Yeah, then I will just say next, next slide. Thank you.
Just one second.
Yeah. Well, while you're setting that up, what I can do is, is set this up for you. Today, there's really sort of two discussion items or two presentation items we want to give to the council. One is a brief update on some of the key findings that we have made from the data perspective, and then some key findings from a, an online survey that was conducted over the past several months and give you some of the findings and perceptions of how people view the parking system. So there we, there we are. There we're going. And so again, just an update, the data collection effort, update the online survey. There's a lot of data, so not, you know, we're not going to overwhelm you tonight. And then have time for questions and answers. Next slide, please. As you can see from this slide, by the black boundary, that's the entire study area for the project. And then within the sort of light yellow shaded area, we did separate analysis of the, what we call the core data zone in the downtown. The biggest change that occurred since the 2017 study was the total number of on-street stalls within the large black boundary has been reduced by about 23% or 197 stalls. So in 2017, we surveyed 846 stalls. This year, we surveyed 649 stalls. And the other biggest change was that 200 stalls remaining, and you see almost all of them, in fact, all of them are in that yellow shaded core data collection area, transitioned to three-hour paid parking. And so those are the two biggest changes. Again, a 23% reduction in on-street supply and then 200 paid parking stalls. As you can see in the colors, the red represents the three-hour stalls. And the purple represents no-limit stalls or stalls that are still completely unregulated. Anybody can park there for any amount of time that they like. There's a smattering of 15-minute, 30-minute and ADA stalls, but within those, I think it totals five, six, seven stalls. And that hasn't changed much since 2017. Next slide, please. We also did extensive data, data collection in your off-street supply. And as you can see, the red parcel boxes, and that's not the number of stalls in the parcels, the numbers that you see that those have an ID number for those lots, and that's attached to a table. It would tell you how much, how many, much parking or the number of stalls in each individual lot. But the red parcels are the ones that we surveyed this year. In total, you have 70 off-streets sites. That hasn't changed since 2017. The number of stalls in the sites has changed a little, but not much from 1,669 to 1,764 stalls this year. That could be just errors in trying to count stalls, for instance, on a gravel lot. So there's very, a lot of stability in the off-street system. The blue parcels are parcels we did not survey. They were either too small, or we couldn't get into them, or they were not a public use or a private commercial use. But overall, we surveyed 47 sites and 1,500 stalls out of 70 sites and 1,764 stalls. So we got a big percentage of all off-street parking in the black boundary. You'll see outside of the black boundary, there's some red boxes and blue boxes as well, parcels. Those are remote lots. We studied those. We have data on those and we can use that data in the future to learn more about those remote lots. So you can see down in the southwest corner, Lot L, for instance. So we have data on those, but they were not contained as findings items in the larger report at this time. They're there for opportunities that we can explore. Next slide. So before I show you some charts and graphs, I can just tell you upfront what the overall findings were from the data, from a data perspective. So the transition to pay-to-park in the core has resulted in more efficient parking. We're getting more cars parked per stall that is available, and we're also getting more turnover in those stalls. So they're turning over faster. And that's had an impact particularly on the weekdays in terms of overall occupancy of the system. The average duration of stay has dropped from 2017 to 2023. It was just under three-hour stay in 2017. The average length of stay between a Saturday or a weekday in 2022, I mean, in 2023 is somewhere around two hours and 11 minutes to two hours and 20 minutes. So the three-hour stalls seem to be working. But I think the biggest thing we saw in terms of a shift in use because the number of stalls have been decreased. And in 2017, we had a high percentage of the on-street supply was being used for stays of five or six hours at a time, which sometimes suggests employees. We've had a significant increase in the use of the off-street supply this year compared to 2017. So we're getting better turnover in the on-street system. We're getting good lengths of stay in the on-street system. On the weekdays particularly, we're seeing a few more available stalls on-street. But the off-street supply, when I show you some heat maps here in a minute, I think it'll really sum this up for you. The system operates well across several, several industry best practice metrics that includes turnover enforcement. You have a very compliant system within industry standards. Again, turnover and the overall efficiency of the system ranks well across those, those metrics. And that's in the larger report too, for both Saturdays and weekdays. One thing that we do realize is when you go back to that smaller core area, the yellow shaded area that I showed you in the original inventory map, parking can feel difficult and feel inconvenient. Because there's a high number of block faces within the core that are constrained as compared to some of the block faces just adjacent to the core or further out from the core. This is particularly evident, even though we've got those increased turnover numbers and higher use of the off-street lots. This is really still evident as it was in 2023 on Saturdays, more so than the weekday. Block faces outside of the core, again, have very low demand. And that is possibly connected to user perceptions of walkability and connectivity of those spaces outside of the core and just the convenience of those spaces, particularly in hot weather. It's a bit of a walk to some of those stalls. Next slide.
Rick, can you talk about block faces? I'm sorry.
Oh, can I define a block face?
I might be the only one.
You're not.
No, you're not. It was on a previous map, but it wasn't good to see.
Definition of block face.
Yep. We'll show you the block faces when we get to slide eight. A block face is simply usually an area on a street that has parking on it, and it's usually intersected by a lateral street. So think of a city block possibly being four block faces. We measure by block face, by system and by lot, so that we can really get down granularly when we look at some of these numbers that you see in these charts. So this is the weekday, and right now we're just focusing on the core. We're the highest, and in the larger report, you can see it at a more macro level, but we thought we'd focus on the core because that's where all the activity or the majority of the activity is occurring. And this is for weekdays. So the top graphic that you see is weekdays in the core on-street. Those 329 stalls that are on-street in that yellow shaded area. And again, recognizing that it's 329 stalls this year, as it was 512 in the past 2017 study. The, the vehicle trips per stall have actually improved a bit, even though, you know, we have less cars overall parking on the street because we have 197 less stalls. But the number of cars parking per stall has remained steady. And it's actually up about 4% weekdays over what it was in 2017. So again, that's one of those good metrics that you want in a parking system. So on the weekdays, it's probably a little easier to find parking on-street than it was in 2023. And again, as I said, the average duration of stay is now under two, two hours in many stalls, particularly in the three-hour stalls, and that's down 29% from 2017. The lower graphic, and you can see the two, going back up to the upper graphic, looking at the arrows, you can see the changes in peak occupancies between 2017, when you look at that yellow, that orange band that goes laterally across that graphic at the top. That is considered where you want to be in parking. It's called the efficient range, and anything that gets above that into the red zone is constrained. And you can see that you were edging up in 2017, basically from noon till 3:00. You were in that orange zone, but you were getting very, very close on weekdays to a fully constrained parking system. And you can see then at 2:00 PM, weekdays, the peak occupancy in the on-street system in the core is 69%, 70%. Down below, same thing. You have weekday occupancies in the core off-street. So these are the off-street system. Now you can see that shift that I talked about. We see we reduce the number of on-street stalls, and all of a sudden, the on-street system goes from 69% parked at 1:00 PM in 2023 at the peak hour versus 53% at the peak hour in 2017. So off-street parking is absorbing additional man, demand that has been created by the decrease in the on-street supply. And weekday occupancies in the off-street system are up 10 to 15 percentage points. And at the peak hours then, for on-street and off-street, there's minimal available capacity in the core public parking supply. This, this is only your supply. There's, there's capacity in the private supply, but particularly in the off-street system, the sense of constraint is probably still there. There's a lot, there's still empty parking in the system. There's over 800 stalls empty in the system during the peak hour. Is there a question? Nope. Okay. Next slide. So let's shift to Saturday. Now, the graphic at the top left, you can see that in 2017, you had some problems. At the peak hour, parking was 104% parked. And when you get over 100%, that means there were quite a few people parking illegally on-street in 2023. You had you had seven acts, and you had eight of the 10 hours that we surveyed, over 85%, which is that red range that says people really are having trouble finding parking. Saturday in the core, now you've gone to three-hour parking and the new pay-to-park system, and occupancies have come down, like I mentioned earlier. You're only in the red range, two of the 10 hours that we surveyed. And you're fluctuating particularly in the yellow moderate and orange efficient range for most of the day. So vehicle trips have remained steady, as I said, but occupancies have decreased. So vehicle trips per stall per day have remained steady, and your occupancies have decreased. That's a good thing. But still, available three-hour stalls are difficult to find. Because if you focus down just on the three-hour stalls, they're 92% occupied. As I said, the average duration of stay is, has decreased below three hours, but it's a little longer on the weekends. The average stay on-street in 2023 on a weekday is two hours and 20 minutes, and on the weekend is two hours and 38 minutes. Off-street system, as you can see below, not, there's been more use, as you can see on Saturdays, there's increases in most of the surveyed hours in the use of the off-street system compared to 2020, 2017 at the peak hour, which is for 2023 at 3:00 PM, about 81% of the off-street supply in the core is in use. But you're, within all of those 47 sites that we evaluated, you're at 81% occupancy. The public system, the five lots that you have where you pay for parking are extremely, extremely congested and constrained. And you'll see that next when we go to the heat maps. So on a Saturday in the off-street system, there's minimum available capacity in the core public parking supply. Still, there's 600 empty stalls in the overall system, but they're in private supply, either in off-street lots or residential areas. The public system is, is fully maximized. So next slide. So here's, on the left, you have the weekday, and on the right, you have the weekend. And you know, we use color to display level of use, red being constrained, orange being efficient, yellow being moderate, and green being low. You can see the blue circle that we put around the main core area within the core data collection zone. And you can see on the outside of that blue clustered area, a lot of green. But again, issues of connectivity, the supply and private control and things like that are driving very, very low use of that supply. On the left, on the weekday, you can see that the on-street system, the red lines on those block faces suggest constraint. But on the weekday, the on-street system is somewhat constrained. But, and the off-street system, though, has capacity. But most of those green and orange boxes in the off-street system are private facilities. There are two red boxes, 40. I think it's 40 and 42. Those are public lots. That changes dramatically on the weekend, Saturday. You can see within the blue clustered box, the blue clustered circle, the on-street system, lots more red block faces at the peak hour. And then look at the off-street system. All of, a huge, a larger, a much larger proportion and percentage of the off-street system also goes red. So Saturdays are still extremely congested. The system's operating more efficiently in terms of putting more cars per stall into the system, but it's still creating constraints. So you're getting more efficiency out of each stall, but you still have periods during the day when things are, are constrained, and particularly in what we call the public supply, which is the on-street system, which the city controls, and the city lots, which the city controls. Next slide. So real quickly, and then we can get into questions. I wanted to transition to the findings of the, the travel survey that we had out. We got 642 responses back. And you can see on the left there, we had 321 residents, 115 employees, and 206 visitors. And then within the 321 residents and 115 employees, there were 99 employees who were both residents and employees. So anyway, that's how that breaks out. But overall, let's think about, let's, let's ask the question or answer the question. What do employees think about the parking system? We know that 81% of employees drive to work in a single occupant vehicle. Even with COVID and the, the service nature of your downtown, only 5% of employees work from home remotely. 27% of employees who live in Leavenworth walk or bike to work, which is a really good number. So if I work downtown and I, and I live in the neighborhood, I'm going to walk to work. So that helps tremendously. Most employees are provided with free parking or park in an area without restrictions, or at least that's what this sample is telling us. Fewer than 15% of the employees who were surveyed have a parking permit offered by the city. And we have additional evidence and comments that we want to work with, with you later, is, is I think we need to communicate the program better. But only 15% of the surveys, of employees surveyed actually have a permit. Most of them are parking for free, either off-street or possibly in those no-limit stalls that you saw on the inventory map. We asked people to comment on their key priorities. Free and affordable parking was, was high on employees' lists, more parking supply, dedicated employee lots, additional transit service and bike improvements. If we had to score their satisfaction with the parking system on a scale of one to five, it's a 1.9. So employees are not happy with the parking system from the results of this survey. Next slide.
Rick, can I ask you a question?
Please, yes.
On the last side, it says most employees have parking provided to them. What does most mean?
Or they're 50%?
Oh, good point. I, we may not have written that perfectly. What we asked them is where do they park and do they pay for it? So most employees are parking for free in an area without restrictions. So I apologize.
No, 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 I understand that. But is there a percentage that corresponds with the word most?
I can get that for you.
That's all right.
Yeah, it's over 50%.
Because if most employees are provided with free parking, I don't understand the dissatisfaction, the low satisfaction score.
It might be far away.
It's far away. Yeah, I think it's far away and inconvenient. There's inconvenience and, and and it might not always be available every day. And I think that correlates why they wanted dedicated lots.
I can think about people who park in the residential area around the church and then walk downtown to serve. And I've spoken to people and they say, I want to be able to park right in front of where I, where I work.
Right. Sure. Thank you.
Rick, quickly. Thank you for the question, and sorry about the confusion on that, but thank you on it for that question.
Rick, quickly, yeah, on the statistic numbers of the employees, do we know, do we have a number of overall, how many employees there actually are in downtown Leavenworth? You said that it looks like 115 answered your survey. Like, what percentage of the total is that?
Point. I would have to shift that back to Shelby, but we can get that and then we can, when we do our updated narrative of, of what we've learned, we could put that number in and say, this is the percentage of employees that we know work downtown and what percentage of those responded. So.
Thank you.
You know, thank you. Again, and employees, we have, if you look at the resident employees, it's 115 plus 99. So we had about 200 employees, 215 employees responded to the survey.
Okay.
Sharon? I have a question too. Where it says key resident priorities, were those, did that come from the residents that live in the city limits or from the employees? Or where did that key resident priorities come from?
From residents who live in the city of, of Leavenworth, the city boundaries of Leavenworth, city limits of Leavenworth. And then those, that, those 99 of those residents also not only live in Leavenworth, but they live downtown. They live close, closer to downtown. So they're, they're, they consider them, they answered the resident question because they're a resident of Leavenworth. But then they also answered the employee question because they work downtown.
So they would, they went like where it says the third one down, resident slash local parking pass. So they would like a free parking path to park somewhere in the city downtown.
Well, I would say in that one, and we can parse, get into the data to answer that better, but I would say that as a group of within those 321 residents, that key priorities were some type of a local parking pass or incentive to park downtown. And we could break that out between those who are residents that don't work out downtown and residents who do work downtown. But overall, residents, you know, because when that employee who works downtown was answering the question as a resident, he was answering the question as a resident, he or she.
And did you, do you know where these resident people lived in the city? Do they, did they give their address?
No, we, we took them at their word. If we said, do you live in, within the city limits of Leavenworth? So we took them at their word. We didn't, we don't take that type of data to get that personal with, with a respondent. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Before that, and you, to visitors, yeah, residents. So overall satisfaction with the parking system scored out at 2.6 out of 5, which fell into the categories we had slightly dissatisfied. Not as dissatisfied as employees are, but you know, they're not fully satisfied either. So visitors, we had 206 visitors, which was great. These are people who don't live in Leavenworth. And we got these through different mechanisms of, of being able to contact visitors when they were in Leavenworth, hotels, Airbnbs, et cetera. 57% of the visitors, if you ask them, how difficult is it to find parking, they find it difficult to very difficult. So if we were to, again, put that on its own rating scale, comes to about 2.3 out of 5. But over half of, of visitors are still coming to downtown and they're finding it difficult. Very difficult to find, to find parking. Visitors find it slightly easier when we ask them, is it easier to park on-street or easier to park off-street? And what's interesting, you know, using that 2023 data that we showed you about the increases, significant increases in use in the off-street system, we were surprised to hear that visitors find it slightly easier to find off-street parking in the 2023, in 2023 than compared to on-street. And so that kind of correlates well with some of the data we found in terms of the shift in use of your system. 45% of visitors say that they park on-street in an area without restrictions. So that's a pretty big number. But it's a 206 responses. But some visitors are trying to be savvy and they're trying to find the free parking first, before they suggest that they're trying to find the free parking first, before they move into the, the paid area. Or the restricted area, the three-hour area. Visitors generally rate the walking experience favorably, 3.7 out of 5. But biking and bus service, the rankings, 3.1 for biking, 2.6 for shuttles. And just the comments we got, we got thousands of comments, and those, those are in the larger report. Is that some comments were, we need bike improvements, we need transit improvements, it's not good enough. So overall, the difficulty score is 4.1 out of 5. When you put all of the questions we ask and all of the categories we ask the questions in, visitors find it very difficult to find parking. We asked them what you would like more of additional parking supply. Everybody said that. Bike improvements, additional extended transit service, sidewalk maintenance and snow removal, and improving the streetscape. And with that, I'm sorry, I ran through that so fast, and I know there's some questions. We can go to questions now, and I appreciate your time.
Rick, I want to ask you, when you, on the map itself, what's the, so that's all below, that entire thing, is that all south of Highway 2? I'm assuming it is. Because I can't tell where.
Core area?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that did not include parking lots north of Highway Two?
Oh, well, no, um, we have lots of parking lots north. Can we put that back up?
Yeah, getting to it, getting to it.
Yeah, the, I thought you were talking about the core zone. The core zone is all south of Highway Two.
Right.
But uh if you look at them, y- you could see the, all of those off-street facilities north of Highway Two. There's a lot of them. So we sample, we sample all those.
This is Highway Two, right in the.
That's Highway Two, that's what I thought. Okay, all right.
Yeah, and the, literally, literally, we got ninety percent of the off-street stalls. It was forty-seven of seventy lots, but when you take the total stalls, we got about ninety percent of your off-street stalls surveyed, plus the remote lots that again, we're, we're gonna look at more thoroughly um as we move into strategies.
And so your off-street parking is just basically residential parking, is that what that is?
Parking in the. Not in the off-street lots. Most, if you, if you look at the green block faces, that, that's probably mostly residential.
Okay.
But the off-street lots north of Highway Two are mostly private lots.
Okay.
Let's see that.
Not residential.
Kind of turns up there. That's the form server. See that, that should even.
So we, Rick, how, how far on are you from leading this?
I mean, the private paid lines, Tom Lynn's on the corner of the, shows the country too. Let's see really private paid.
I've received two. Yeah. Tasks that I haven't been able to change in the UBS.
You can't park there.
Right.
But like, people park in Kashmir Valley Bank, they park at the post office.
That's what it works a lot better for me if I have it in my notebook. Yeah. Because looking up at that, that could be Japan for all I know. In my, I can't read any of the writing. It's in my notebook, can you ask a question? It's right there in front of my, now the presentation. Pardon me?
Eleven, right. It would be really small too, Sharon, on an eight and a half by eleven.
I have a relationship.
Well, it would beat the heck out. Fifty feet away.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Rick, I have a question.
You'll get it.
Sure.
You still there?
Yeah.
Out of the, the two hundred and nine visitors that were complaining about public transportation, did you ask them how they got here? Did they drive or did they?
That's a great question. No, I, I would have to go back into the data and get William Reynolds, who is our, um, our analyst on that with you. It's a great question. Um, that's something we can look at. But visitors, I think visitors would, I, I'm guessing, and again, we'll, we'll find that out for you. Visitors who are parking on the periphery or think they could park on the periphery um in a free area, were probably suggesting that I drove, but I was so far away, it'd be great if you had better linkages and connectivity.
Yeah.
And that. Through bikes, either bikes or transit.
Yeah, that leads to a question, Rick. You talk about walkability, you mentioned that. Do you have like a threshold of distance? Are we talking a third of a mile, quarter mile, half a mile, a mile?
Yeah, I actually have it in feet. Um, you know, and it's, it's weather dependent and it's um, um, uh you know, uh the, how you're, sidewalks, availability of sidewalks, um attractiveness of the off, of the off-street streetscape. Um but a, a visitor uh to a town uh like Leavenworth, who I'm, I'm an infrequent visitor, you, they want to park within seven hundred to eight hundred feet of their intended destination. Um and we use that model a lot even to size and locate garages. So without any other type of connectivity, like a transit system, a shuttle, a bike system or whatever, the average visitor says, I'm willing to walk eight hundred feet. And sixty-five percent, sort of our national number, sixty-five percent will say that's their sweet spot, which means thirty-five percent will say they'll walk farther. Um if those other connectivities are there, but so I hope I answered your question. Uh uh an employee about twelve hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred feet.
Okay, so that would be the number beyond that where a shuttle would probably be most effective.
Yeah, and then you have to figure in, uh again, we didn't ask that in the survey. A shuttle would be effect, it would be an option, but then you have to consider frequency um uh and where it's picking up and where it's landing. Um you know, if you could land within that eight hundred foot circle, that's good. But frequency, I mean, you know, if it's coming every half hour, what we found, we haven't surveyed that in Leavenworth, so I'm just using other examples that if it's coming every half hour, they're not interested.
Yeah, no, I hear you. Obviously, the ones like in the ski towns, uh you know, they're in every ten minutes.
Right, so, so that, that extension beyond the eight hundred foot circle is contingent then on sidewalks, lighting, um, uh beauty of streetscape, uh and frequency of the connection.
Okay. Yeah. Um and in those uh, those charts you have of uh um priorities, where you talk about visitor, resident and employees, are those in order of rank? If you want to bring that up really quick? Cause you, you had different priorities, like what they were most concerned about. Were those in order of like how they were ranked or were they just kind of just a list, a bullet point list?
Right now, they're a bullet point list based on, but I can, you know, again, I wish William was here. He was in flight today. That's why he couldn't be here tonight. I'm gonna ask him that. You ask great questions. I'm gonna assume they're in rank order.
Okay.
But, but, um, but we, we have that and we can make sure.
Okay, it's just good to know what the priority of the parties are.
That's, yeah, on a scale of one to five of these five, whi- which is your top? That's, that's very good. I'll ask William and we can reorder these if they're not already ordered.
Yeah, no problem. And uh one quick question, in your just overall work as a parking consultant, have you ever correlated downtown, the effects of downtown parking on downtown traffic, or is that not part of the scope of this?
Well, we haven't.
Yeah.
Uh because we're parking guys, but we do have engineering staff that work with us and William Reynolds is one of those. He's actually done traffic impact analysis for you guys and, and other clients in, in Leavenworth. Generally, the biggest effect on traffic that parking has is some of those metrics I talked to you about efficiency. Is if we can get more cars per stall and we can get the occupancies down to what that were consistently within that orange and yellow band, then it has significant impacts on traffic. Uh because there's less circulation, there's less people stalled, um the on-street system flows better. So at the very highest level is a non-engineer, my experience in many cities is quote unquote, parking management is a key element of traffic management. Um but you know, you have signalization and, and you know, right turn lanes and left turn lanes, things like that. But yeah, there is a correlation between good parking management and improving um uh traffic flow. Uh and um so yes.
Well, I think the bigger question is, you know, as part of this study, I think we talked about in the parking uh, the uh the parking committee talked about the, what would the effect of a parking structure have on downtown traffic? Which I think is one of the bigger questions. We may not have an answer right now, but that's, I think, one of the looming things we're talking about. Because as you said, the visitors, you know, they're not happy. They're finding it difficult to park. And if there was this um shuttle system connected with the downtown with parking structures, maybe one or two that would efficiently get people off the road on a shuttle into their location quicker than them, you know, searching for the number one spot in front of where they only had to walk four hundred feet or whatever they wanted to do, the half of their sweet spot. Um just curious if those, those are part of the questions I think that we need to answer. Get to that, cause if we can eliminate downtown congestion, eliminate people wandering around looking for that prime spot, knowing that's not available, you can only get in the garage, like you do in the airport, you can't park out in front of your gate. You can only be there for fifteen minutes before someone gets mad at you, but, or not even.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
Yeah.
But um and the final question I have, and I, that's kind of more rhetorical about the uh
Yeah.
the parking structures.
Big point.
Big deal, is I, I, based on the last meeting we had, you brought up some great points about um residential parking permits and you said people wanted them and that would allow them to park downtown. I recently investigated the city of Olympia and they have zones where if you live in downtown, obviously you should be able to park on the street if you live there, and those zones are about the size of Lebanon. Cause it's Olympia, it's giant.
Yeah.
But they can buy a, they can buy a parking pass for uh, you know, twenty-five dollars per year. And they can park, you know, kind of wherever. They have limits in terms of time and how long it can be there, but they can just park in their downtown zone almost anywhere if you're, you know, if you're registered for that zone. And that seems to be a pretty well, do you have any familiarity with how well that works in terms of maintaining parking efficiency?
Um, well, we, we helped do the Olympia plan.
Okay, great.
Um there's, there's a lot to it. And the one in Olympia is most of the streets they're allowed to park on are actually zoned residential. And it was, yeah, it was that, you know, how downtown evolved. Um, we've, we've done some research in anticipation of this question because that was a key residential priority. And, and Selby kind of said, what, what can we find? And we found two cities, um that one of them is Estes Park, Colorado. Um and they have a seasonal parking system because they don't charge for parking in the off-season because they're not as uh successful as you are. Their, their use goes down in their off-season, but they have a very high peak season like you do. And they have a, a program that allows any resident of the city to park for an hour free at any time-limited paid stall in their downtown. Um and so we're trying to get more information on that system. Um and we're trying to find other systems like Olympia, Estes Park, and so we can answer this question more, more fully for you. It down the road. The other one is Laguna Beach, California.
Okay.
And they have a, a dial-a-ride program uh that any resident can use. Uh in the old days, and this is why we want to get cost stuff, because they, they're pretty expensive. But in the early years of their dial-a-ride program, it was limited to the number of times you could use it per year. So like eight times a year, you can, you could get an Uber or Lyft or a cab or a dial-a-ride and the city would pay for it. Um it doesn't, didn't have high use. Um and now they've gone to uh a program that says any resident um can use the dial-a-ride program. Um and right now it's unlimited. But you can only park in time-limited stalls, um and those are usually paid to park. Uh and you can't stay any longer than the time stay. Um so there's examples out there, there's, there's things that we're gonna, gonna look at. Uh and then we're gonna try to get to the highest degree we can, the cost and how that might apply to your system. They, both systems that we've talked to so far, there's a lot of administration to them. Uh you have to have certain um uh enforcement tools. Um and um but overall, those are two programs that are up and running. Again, the Laguna Beach one, they, they evolved it from a limited program to uh you can use it at any time because the use was low. In both cities, the use is low. And in Estes Park, less than two percent of uh residents use the program.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to uh further uh information down the road here. We know you're, you're in, in process here. We've got to move on and, and.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, may I ask just one more question?
Thank you, Rick.
But that's okay. Can I ask just one question?
One, quick.
Quick question.
We're way.
All right. Um, this is a residential parking question. As I looked at that map, I realized residential parking programs would affect us differently depending on where they instituted it. I noticed that Whitman and Benton, the heat map, they were pretty strong, especially on weekends, driving it this weekend. It was packed.
Everywhere.
Yeah, um but especially uh Whitman and Benton. If hypothetically, residents there were to institute, or the city were for public safety reasons, a residential parking plan where people could not park or uh tourists could not park on those streets, would that significantly affect our numbers or methodology or, or our results as far as available parking and what we would need to do in that specific residential area that's very close to the downtown core, that seems to get the brunt of that tourist parking?
Well, it depends on how you str- really quick, depends on how you structure it. If it's only residents can park there, it's gonna kick back all of that demand into the downtown. Uh if it's a traditional residential parking program that allows residents and their guests to park all day and the, during certain hours, it's time limited, it would have less, less of an impact. So in, in a nutshell, we really have to talk to you about how it would be structured. Because yeah, if you just prohibit anybody other than residents from parking there, that non-resident that demand that's there now would kick back into your system.
Thank you, Rick.
You bet. Thank you. I really appreciate the time. And thanks for the opportunity to work with you guys.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay.
Until the next time. All right. Moving on, winter parking regulations.
Shannon, you wanna take this one? You're not prepared?
No.
All right, I'll do it. Um so counsel before you is uh for discussion is an amendment to our, a proposed amendment to our winter parking regulations.
Yeah.
Um as you, I believe, are aware, we currently prohibit on-street parking between November fifteenth and March fifteenth, front block, actually March fourteenth, between three AM and seven AM. Um in the residential area and downtown. Downtown, there's a uh ban on three AM, seven AM year round. Uh what this proposal is, is to increase the prohibition of on-street parking in the residential areas north of Highway Two from midnight to seven AM. And the reason we're asking for this is twofold. One, when we have uh snow maintenance operations conducted by Public Works, they begin around midnight. And if there are cars parked on-street between midnight and three AM, they are a hindrance to our snow removal operations. I'm sure that some of you saw cars that were plowed in for the course of last winter's um snowy season. Uh the other is we spoke with Shlain County Sheriff's Office about assistance in helping us enforce the ban on, on-street parking in the twilight hours. And they said to us that given the way their shift load is and their shift change works, um that they would be more than happy to assist us in enforcing this regulation if we changed it from midnight um to seven instead of three AM to seven, so they could go out and enforce between midnight and three. And then they do paperwork until five and then they shift, shift their shifts, uh switch their shifts. So that is what we are recommending. Um there is uh no change in your packet as well. Um and we're happy to answer any questions. And if you guys are in favor of this, we bring back an ordinance at the next meeting, sir.
Yeah, how difficult is it for law enforcement or our parking people to get a cell phone number when they have a license plate? Is it possible to reach out to people before we tow?
I.
That is what we do.
We can make a phone call?
No, I work with Shlain County Sheriff, for them to reach out through their place system.
Before we tow?
People absolutely.
Is it pretty much real time, gonna share? Get a license plate, not yet? Get a cell phone number? Cause I'd like to do that rather than tow.
They just call Rivercom. Rivercom tells them.
Start notices on cars.
Uh start ticketing. Start ticketing?
Yeah.
That doesn't help our snow plow.
If it's still emergency, then we'll plow, but we start up a ticket.
Well.
Okay.
But they'll, but they, they can still get that phone call too.
Yeah.
To answer your question, we did have a case where we had a, a, a vehicle encased in snow. And it was to the point where I was going to have to have it removed.
Absolutely.
I, we, we told the sheriff, I found the license plate. We were able to work with the sheriff who contacted the owner's father and guardian. So, so we absolutely tried to get that owner to move their vehicle.
Cool.
Before we tow it.
That's great. How many cars have we actually towed?
I, about four.
Oh, since?
Yeah, I would say you and I, I've seen two bills.
Yeah, well, when we tell a car to a car though, um we have a bill if it is a uh, an RV or something that they can't attach some sort of value on it, a trailer. We would pay the bill for that. Any car that we tow out of the lot that has blocked in, people like if they're triple parked or, or they are happy to be removed because they've been sitting on the street too long, they will be encountered through the lot and the owner would have to.
Makes sense.
Unless it's been done, and we do have occasions where people use our lots to dispose of their vehicle, they don't want it.
Yeah. Uh case in point, we had, the last two weeks, I've had two cars parked on Ash and one over in Evans, they were both abandoned.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they just park in there and walk away. And one sat there for, well, it sat there for a long time, then I got ahold of Shannon and then eventually she got the sheriffs and they, but they, it took a while because um if tabs are expired and they, they just left it there.
Not sold.
And the other one, they didn't have any license plates. They just got it there and had furniture in it. That was open. So it's like, you got, you got that happening.
They have a VIN number that you can track up the person.
Right. Right, but it's.
Question, um I, I'm under the understanding that every time we make a police call, whether it's for a arm alarm going off somewhere in a building or the school, that every time they respond, there's a fee that we pay above just what we pay the sheriff's department?
No.
No. So Rivercom, the way that we're all billed.
So Rivercom, the way that we're all billed is they do take the number of hits from each location. And then they divide that by the total hits of the entire county and then repay based on those proportionate rates. So for instance, if Leavenworth had a thousand calls and there were ten thousand calls through the whole county, we would only pay whatever that small fee needs to be. And that fee changes from year to year because it's based on what is their budget. Sometimes their budget's up because they have maybe some capital expenses. And other times their budget is down because they don't have capital expenses.
If we didn't have any sheriff calls, then would we picking, be picking up money, having to pay money for the rest of that county, the thirty thousand, whatever.
If no one in Leavenworth ever called Rivercom, we wouldn't get a bill.
We wouldn't. Okay. For Rivercom. But the sheriffs.
But the sheriffs. And, and that's what we're talking about is if we moved this, that that would be a part of their regular, they've got staff up here. And they would be patrolling and sighting these people if they're parked illegally during the night. Those, that's not us calling them out. That's just them doing it as part of their contract with us. And that's what they said. They would be willing to do that if we moved it back to, to midnight because their hours are such that they've got midnight, basically midnight to three to, to roam the streets and make sure that they're clear on a snowy night. Or sight them.
Yeah.
But then after that, they, that's when they're involved in their end of shift and shift change and everything. So by the time we were starting at three that they had to be out, they're not out with patrols. They're already in the process of changing shifts. So it's an awkward time for them, is what they're saying.
Okay, so when I first started on council, um, if the school, if alarm went off at the school and the sheriff had to go, we were charged for that trip they made to the school. And um, Shantel, weren't we doing something so that
Oh, we.
We're trying to get the, we would pay for two calls and after that, the school had to pay for.
Arms are being built every single month. I contact, I get the report, we figure it out, we keep a spreadsheet. It rolls from July to June and it restarts every July, the first two calls and then charge. Third call thereafter, they start being charged seventy-five.
But that's alarm system, that's.
But this wouldn't be for.
Not the same.
Um, even though they're on duty with the alarm system.
It, if it's a real alarm, it doesn't come through to me for billing.
Okay, just if it's a teacher forgot to set the alarm, that kind of.
They open the door and they set off their own alarms.
Okay. So, so we wouldn't be charged extra if they had to go and put a permit because they're doing that?
That's just.
Patrols will be already paid for. Okay, thanks.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
So the way that the red line and the new ordinance reads on the very back page, it says it's the same, but it's not the same, it's different. And so the wording needs to be changed.
I did make those edits, but.
The fraction's the same, but the hours are different. Do that.
Yeah, it could be the same calendar.
Since that calendar is fine, but on the front page, it says the fourteenth and here it's the fifteenth, so that.
We want to change it to the fifteenth.
Yeah, correct. The dates are the same, but the hours are not the same.
What do you mean? I say at twelve A M to seven A M?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then three to seven. So it says it's the same. But it's not.
So, so I think that whole red line sentence would be boarded better if it said the same calendar period shall apply to.
Yeah.
With strings.
At these hours, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So not the.
Not the times.
It is confusing.
There's a sharp lawyer like Mr. Grafter over here to take that apart.
We can make that change for it, bring this back.
Yeah. Thanks for noting that.
Yeah.
Good. I think this is a good change.
Yeah.
I do too.
Yeah. I support it, especially they were proactive about getting people to move their cars.
Yeah, you remember what Carl fired with Shantel, the car up on Cedar Street that got smashed from the snow? It never got moved or towed. By spring, it was a pancake.
Shannon, I wanted to ask you a question on like RV vehicles that are parked outside folks' residences that are in the street. Uh, is there an issue that the city doesn't want to go to because someone's living in that RV? We don't, we tend to not touch it, even though there's, there's been requests to move it?
I mean, if it's, if it's sitting in their driveway.
No, it's sitting in the street. It's sitting alongside the residence, in the right of way.
If it's on the right of way, then they, they only have twenty-four hours and at this point they can't park overnight on, sleep right away.
Okay.
They cannot overnight on the streets.
All right. There's been some exception to that because I know personally there's some folks who had family member in the RV outside their place and they wanted it towed and it never got, never got dealt with. So I just, I wanted to check that out.
It is much, uh, it, it is, is very difficult to tow an RV if someone is with him. It is, there's a different standard.
That's what I was, that's what I'm asking. Yeah.
I, I don't, uh, I know that, that before, not until we will not take a vehicle if there's somebody in it.
Right, or using that for a home, so to speak.
Exactly.
Right. So that's kind of a different, altogether different category.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, council. I'll bring back the ordinance. Sure. To change the code that discussed. Thank you for your touch.
Okay, moving on, Front Street Park, sledding hill discussion.
Mayor, we have uh, our city attorney, Tom Grastraw online. There's also a confidential memo that was placed at the dais in front of each of you. If you've had a chance to digest that. Great, if you haven't, please have a quick look at it. I'll hand it over to Tom.
Well, I see that a lot of the time has been consumed, so uh, my nice introduction and stuff, I'll, I'll just discard that. Uh, if you've looked at the memo, um, then you will have noticed that there's sort of a spectrum as it relates to potential liability related to the sledding hill. Uh, and that spectrum then influences the risk management decision as to what you should do or would want to do. Uh, from a liability standpoint, uh, the safest thing to do is to close Front Street Park to sledding, uh, to fence it accordingly and to post it no trespassing. Because under the law in the state of Washington, a property owner's responsibility to a trespasser is very limited. Um, you are only responsible for injuries to a trespasser if your conduct is willful and wanton. And it's hard to conceive of a situation where the city might take a willful or wanton act as to anybody. On the other side of the spectrum, the other end of it, uh, the situation where the city has um, the lowest um, burden for a, um, to claim it, to make a claim is where the city would have ordinary care as its responsibility. So it would be responsible then for injuries caused by negligence. That situation would evolve if Front Street Park was open for sledding and the city, um, charged admission with regard to that sledding activity. So on the, on that spectrum of least risk versus most risk, the most risk of claims relates to the sledding hill being open for sledding and the city charging admission. Between those two ends of the spectrum, uh, the statute that is part of the, um, study session package comes into play, R C W four twenty-four to ten, sometimes called the recreational user immunity statute. And in the package, um, certain key words were, were highlighted, one of which is admission, and I've already mentioned that. And the other key words are down in section four where, uh, it's indicated that if uh, an area is open for outdoor recreation, which sledding is, and there's no admission charged, then the liability of the landowner here, the city, is limited uh, for injuries sustained, but only if, uh, it's from a known dangerous, artificial latent condition. Latent means that it's hidden, uh, from the users of the sledding area and for which warning signs have not been conspicuously posted. Well, what all that verbiage means in a nutshell is if it's open for sledding, it's just natural snow on the ground and the city does nothing with respect to that snow and no artificial condition is created. Uh, then in that circumstance, the city has no liability. And in the circumstance where there is an artificial condition that's latent and unknown to the user, if the city posts appropriate signage, again, the city can escape liability. We had these issues come up, uh, related to an event in twenty eighteen. A Miss Rodriguez was sledding at Front Street Park. That was one of the years where the city did, um, effectively nothing except leave the area in its natural condition. There was no smoke, snow making, there was no grooming or anything like that. There was a berm that had built up at the bottom of the hill as a result of the sledding activity, and there were some bumps on the hill. Miss Rodriguez in sledding, uh, got going too fast. She, um, approached the berm at the bottom of the hill to try to recover her situation, she stuck out her leg. And that didn't work well for her because she broke her leg in her crash, uh, against the berm at the bottom of the hill. The city got sued, uh, and that matter went to hearing in twenty nineteen in the Shland County Superior Court. And her case for very substantial damages was dismissed. And it was dismissed because, uh, the court determined on the undisputed facts that the conditions on the hill were all natural conditions. There were no artificial conditions. And that the berm was something that was not latent but patent uh, that, um, Miss Rodriguez could see. As a result of that, the claim against the city was dismissed, as I indicated. So we have this spectrum of liability here, potential liability. Um, virtually no chance of liability if the area is closed because then our responsibility as to a trespasser is very low to a higher, uh, chance of claims if we charge an admission for a use of this area. And, uh, we have pretty good liability protection for the historic use, uh, at the, uh, sledding hill where we allow it simply to be in its natural condition. So those are my remarks. I, I believe this is a discussion item and Selby may have some additional comments to add uh, from a management point of view on the situation. And I'm happy to stand by and answer any questions, but I note there's not a lot of time left. So go forth.
Well, Tom, I wanted to ask you something here. If I read this right, number four A, um, first off, uh, we do nothing to the hill, like we don't use artificial snow, just, we just, the snow falls on it, goes there. And it says if we are, um, we're liable unless signs have been, not been, so if it was posted conspicuously that this is dangerous, use it your own risk, whatever, doesn't that absolve us from the liability? Did we post it really well?
Hey, we don't care. If, if it's the, the existing condition of just natural snow uh, and whatever develops in the national, nat- natural snow from the sledding. So all natural conditions. In those circumstances, the city doesn't have any liability. It's where there's an artificial condition that develops where potential liability exposure, uh, comes into play. And for those artificial conditions that are latent, in other words, they couldn't be observed by the user, then we would have liability unless we posted signage with respect to that latent condition. Let me give you an example. Um, I represented a different city as it related to a sledding hill. It happened to be the city of Everett. They had a sledding hill and quite far removed from the sledding hill was a baseball or softball backstop. And sledders were using the hill and, uh, some of them got up a fairly, a good amount of speed and they were getting close to the backstop before they were able to stop. Um, well, somebody wasn't able to stop, crashed into the backstop, sued the city of Everett and I defended the city of Everett in that case. We argued that the backstop was not latent, that it was obvious that it was there and the city should be dismissed. Unfortunately, the facts were a little bit more complicated than that. And, uh, the circumstance was that, um, kind of chain link sort of material that you have on backstops had been broken. And, uh, so portions of it protruded back into the snow before you got to the backstop. And that protruding wire could not be seen because it was hidden and obscured by the so- snow. So the court in that case said that was a latent artificial condition. There was no warning as to, what should we call it, misplaced and protruding wires in the snow. And so the city had, City of Everett had potential responsibility. That case therefore was not dismissed and ultimately the city of Everett paid damages as it related to that sledder. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, the latent part is pretty, pretty critical.
Right.
Latent, meaning hidden, the user cannot see it. It has to be an artificial condition.
Yep. Tom, I have one quick question on that. Um, those bumps and the ruts and the dirt and the ice are generally caused by sledders. So they are intervening with the natural condition on their own. We're not. Wouldn't that be constitute an artificial condition since the sledders are men, are people? And it's, it's intervention of the sledders that creates this dangerous situation, the bumps and the, you know, everything we see out there.
Those were, those were arguments that were made in the Rodriguez case and the Shland County Superior Court did not deem that to be an artificial condition.
Okay, good. Interesting. So it's a, it's a natural condition as a result of sleddings.
It's a natural condition associated with the natural conditions of snowfall and ice formation and the outdoor recreational use.
Recreational use. Okay, it wouldn't have used it.
Cause that's what the statute's about.
Tom, if a, if a youngster brought something so that when they went down the hill, they would, you know, go up over it and, and flop over and, um, it wasn't noticed, you know, by the city or anything. Uh, it, so it wouldn't, maybe it's just there for that day, but they injured themselves. Would the city be responsible for that?
I don't see that under that set of facts, but let's use your example and change it just a little bit. So somebody is sledding there in an association with sledding there, they have to walk back up the hill. And in, in, in order to walk back up the hill, they, uh, use, um, a trekking pole or a ski pole or something like that. And in conjunction with that use, sometime during the, uh, during the day, that ski pole turns up to be lost. And let us assume that that ski pole gets embedded in that berm at the bottom of the hill, very similar to the Rodriguez case, but now we have an embedded ski pole. Let's assume city knows of that embedded ski pole and the city does nothing about it and does not warn about it. Now you have a fact pattern very similar to that city of Everett case that I just mentioned. And yes, there would be the potential for liability exposure there. But the city has to know of the artificial condition.
Hmm, yeah.
But, but the, but the fact that they're sledding and that causes, um, the bumps and all of that is not, that's not being, again, in that Rodriguez case as being artificial.
That is correct.
So that, some of the kids love to build up a jump.
Sure.
And that's not artificial then. That's their.
That is, that is not artificial, but let us assume that as part of that job, they bring in a piece of plywood in some fashion. You know, and, and so they're, they've, they've added wood to the situation. You know, and and so they're, they've, they've added wood to the situation now. It has to be known to the city, okay? If you look at the highlighted language there by reason of a known dangerous artificial condition. They bring in wood, uh use that as part of their construction of a jump. It's left there. It becomes known to the city and the city does nothing about it. You had and but somehow or another it is latent to other users. In other words, they can't see it. The city could have some risk exposure there unless it posted a conspicuous sign. Indicating woody debris associated with jump built in the middle of hill or something like that. Obviously, the, the better course of action would be to remove the artificial condition.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. Okay.
So this conversation was spurred by the idea that we should start. Blowing snow and grooming on that hill.
I agree with you about not blowing snow, by the way. I didn't bring that up.
And so I just want to say that most, you know, the Leavenworth Quarter Sports Club offers tubing at the ski hill. And they offer sledding at the golf course.
Right.
Um and these are groomed, maintained, snow sliding experiences for our visitors. They do cost ten dollars to go to all day long at the golf course. And use their sleds. They provide the sled.
Right.
Um and then tubing is thirty dollars. I think you get five or six runs. I did it a bunch last, last year with my season pass and it's really, really, really fun. But a suggestion that I have is to install a sign at Front Street Park. That would direct people to these locations as an alternative to sledding at Front Street Hill. And so maybe something to the ilk of sled here at your own risk. But if you want a better experience, here's some alternatives.
What do you say, Tom?
There's certainly nothing wrong with signage of that type. Um you are putting them on notice if they're sledding at their own risk. That is fine. And um encouraging people to sled elsewhere might be a good idea also. We will still nonetheless have a liability exposure if there is sledding at the hill. If a known dangerous artificial condition develops that is latent to the users there. It's just the way it is.
Yeah, so I I think people are gonna use that anyway. We all know, I mean, we all, we all know that hundreds, thousands, let's say thousands of people use it there and.
And that's why we're going to the handoff.
Well, and that's why I think that the number three makes way more sense saying, look, if we groom it. Right? We take care of it like Ski Hill does, take care of that stuff. It becomes safe. There's less chance for injury. We know that people get hurt there. They don't all sue us, but we know from. Cascade Medical Center that people do get hurt there all the time. And I understand that if we start putting our hands in it, because we already put bumpers down there, right? We put paybales. Drawbales. We already do that. So we're already in the, we're already in the red for that. I believe firmly that if we spend a very little amount of effort grooming that. And not making snow, but maybe dumping snow that we're trying to get rid of anyway. And grooming that, because I think the making snow is not gonna work, right? So we, plus the conditions aren't ever really good for that anyway. It goes everywhere. But if we delivered snow to that area, which is an artificial condition. But if we delivered snow, groomed it, made it safer like they do, they have a very controlled environment at Ski Hill. Where they groom, ski areas groom, because they have liability, because they charge people to use gravity to go down. Things and they have moguls and jumps and whatever. We will have no of those moguls and jumps, but we'll just have a smooth, well-maintained ski hill. I think will lower the risk. And will give people the experience they came for in Leavenworth, because it's what, twenty feet? Not even, right?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Well, the whole slide is more like forty to fifty.
What you just described says that lawyers say that we will increase our risk.
That's right. I I don't think so.
Statistic exposure and and an increase in our premium liability insurance.
Right. And so we're gonna say, we're gonna, we're gonna let people get hurt, know. That people are getting hurt there, pain and suffering, and in trying to enjoy themselves in the town that we've invited them to. And not spend an extra little bit of money to take care of that hill and make it a pleasurable experience. I think we could do better. I think we could definitely invite them.
There's a lot of other places to go have a snow experience.
But downtown is where everybody goes.
We're not, we're not grooming ski trails downtown either.
Yeah, we're gonna use it whether we groom it or not.
Yeah, that's status quo. It's better than shutting it down, which is where we were heading.
Status quo is people are gonna get hurt if we wanna live with ourselves.
Hurt walking down the street.
I get that, but people get hurt a lot more often if there's icy bumps and dirt runs.
It would be a full-time job for Tom's staff to maintain that thing.
Wouldn't. You just have a.
It would.
Yeah.
We don't have grooming equipment. I mean, it's uh.
No, I looked it up. In Vermont, they have sledding grooming equipment. You'd make a pass every night. You'd be done.
We don't, we don't have anything like that.
I know. It's a small investment is what I'm saying in preventing pain and suffering and allowing the people we invite to our town to enjoy the sledding hill that they're gonna do anyway. And then we're just gonna turn and say, oh, and we could have, we could spend a little money on a little better liability insurance. Put up signs that say sled at your own risk, but make it a safer sledding area to prevent risk, which is what Ski Hill does.
Let's start with the signs.
Just gonna make one, because I think you will relate to this, Marco. Um you're a skier and a snowboarder. You you go to Stevens Pass and you get your first run in and it's really nice corduroy, right? It was groomed the night before. You've got a fantastic experience. Your second run, you don't have corduroy anymore. Your third run, you're down to ice. And that's the same thing that would happen to the ski hill. We might groom it at night if we did that. The first kids that are out there in the morning are gonna have a groomed experience. It's gonna, it's gonna deteriorate and exact. And exactly like it is now, just after the first couple kids go down.
You can be out there at midnight and you're still sledding.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You know how many sleds are sold in the corn winner?
Yeah, I know.
Thousands.
Yeah.
They all go down there.
If you shut it down and groom it like they do at ski areas periodically, maybe twice a day, just bring a machine in, quick boom, hit it. Which they sell machines to do it or machines that hook up to our skid steers. And dump snow there from our snow storage areas, wherever we dump snow, instead of putting it, you know, down behind the city. I think we would improve their experience with a very little cost and prevent human suffering. And sure, we'd have to pay a little for that. But I think that's the principled right thing to do.
I think you're not, how much pain and suffering is there? What, I mean, how many injuries?
Well, the Rodriguez claim was one point two five million.
But that's. But, I mean, I know people are getting.
And we paid out, I think it was about nineteen thousand in attorney fees to win.
Okay. But, but.
That was just one claim, one incident. Uh I'm the claims risk manager. I take in all of the city claims. We get anywhere between eight and fifteen claims a year on average. Most of them are trip, fall, or slip and fall on our sidewalks.
So the more time is on the sidewalk, we don't have a lot of flames coming from sledding.
This Rodriguez one was the only one since I've been here that I've ever seen. And I asked WCI if they had any history further back. But they, they weren't able to come up with anything.
Okay.
Well, I think we have an attorney that will pay to give us advice. You need to listen to his advice.
So if, I mean, if there's a majority of council that wants us to pursue the past, uh you know, investigation of what our case agreement hold, then we do that.
Strong indication to move at looking attitude, spending, seeing what it would cost to do anything. Right, right?
It's closed.
Yeah. Sign and, yeah. Okay, that's great. We've got.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Good night, everybody. Nikki will be there for your executive session later.
Oh, yeah.
I know. Anyway, I think we can't manage that. I think if we manage it.
All right. We're down to the, and we've got.
We'd be honoring.
Ten minutes for a break.
So, I mean, I've got my depth case.
King of Leavenworth City Council for November twenty eighth to order, please stand for the flag.
Jason, since it's one of your last.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Jason Lundgren.
Ian Hesperk.
Zeke Reister.
Marco Aurelio.
P. Warlock.
All right, all here accounted for. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Second.
Moved by Keylor, seconded by Ann. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Public safety report. For the late.
How are you this evening?
Great, thanks.
Um. It's been uh nice and slow in Leavenworth. There was about a hundred and forty calls for service. Um Oktoberfest obviously jumped up the patrol hours. With nine hundred and eighty-seven patrol hours with two hundred and three um foot patrol hours on top of that. Um everything as far as in the city has been really pretty quiet. Um there were eighteen citations. You know, four arrests for assault fourth D V. Um was the, was the most. Uh and now we're just gearing up for the festival likes the next few weekends.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Oh. Oh, so Randy, um can you clarify the, I'm looking here at the motor vehicle accident hit and run. What's? What is that? Is that parking lots? Is that pedestrians getting hit? Can you clear, can you clarify that at all?
That's almost always a parking lot or sub park, car parked somewhere and it's hit and run.
Okay. And also I want to check on this assault domestic violence. Is that within the city limits?
Yes, all of those are um. The, that whole list of stuff there is all in the city limits of Leavenworth. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um and I wanted to find. Can you clarify whatever else happened with that bomb threat to get any information on that?
I have gotten no further information. Um I'm trying to remember to check with the detective sergeant to see if he heard anything. Um I forgot to do, I ran in the office real fast. Today I've been off. Um but I ran in real fast and I didn't run into him, but I will try and clarify it. I don't think anything ever went um with it.
So no suspect, no real, I mean, no, no hard data evidence recently?
No, I think he, I think it was some out of state.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll check.
All right, I appreciate that.
I have a question on the welfare checks, eighteen of them. Is this for, you know, in people's homes or homeless people or?
Uh all of that. It can be, a welfare check is kind of a catch-all for a lot of things. Um sometimes when people call in, if they see somebody looks like they're. In need of assistance at a bus stop or homeless, um. Can also be um people checking on family members. Or somebody that's been ill and they're, haven't been able to get them to answer the phone or. Um communicate with them. They'll have us try and go by the house and check on them.
Are, is, are these eighteen mostly the same thing or just a total variety?
I'd have to go in and read each actual report to see what they were, but they, they vary from. Mostly it's people calling to check on somebody. It can be somebody that's been. Um talking about suicide or something like that and they want them checked on. It's kind of a, it's some of the stuff that gets put in there is a big gray area on if we can go and do it.
And are these all in the city limits?
Yes, all of those calls on the sheet um listed is the Leavenworth Monthly Report. That's all just the city of Leavenworth.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Randy, I have a question for you. Um I left you a voicemail. I'm trying to cover some of your uh. Uh um uh unfilled chips for village lights through Washington State Patrol.
Correct. I, I did finally get it. I'm sorry, I didn't have my phone on me. It was in my truck. Um and then by the time I checked it, it was too late to call you back. I was gonna give you a call tomorrow.
Okay.
I think I've had a couple more sign-ups, so we're getting a little better.
Great. Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Randy, have you pulled anybody over in the recent past for excessive muffler noise?
Um a lot of times they see our patrol cars. And they lug it down as low as they can to keep it um. As quiet as they can. Um but that's a, it's one that I would like to catch and cite.
So you'd like uh the public to help you when they're out walking their dogs if they see that? I know it's like, it's one or two vehicles that, you know, it's, I don't think it's a lot of cars out there, but. Would you like the public's help?
It's um so most infractions, well, in fact, all infractions have to be observed by an officer. You can't just call it in. Um so it kinda has to be, we just have to be in the right place at the right time. Um there are a couple of cars up there um that have extremely loud exhaust. That I'd like to have a chat with. Um some of them do already have infractions for it. And they don't seem to care. They just pay them. They do go up each time. Um there's also a couple of people running around with some collector vehicle plates that. Shouldn't be on the vehicles that they have them on and things like that, but all infractions have to be observed. Um by a actual law enforcement officer.
Copy that. Thanks.
All right, anything else?
Bridge.
All right. So thank you, Randy.
You bet. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
I'm not seeing Captain Smith on. On the screen at all. So we'll skip the fire news report and any comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Anybody have something they'd like to? Ask or say, I'm not seeing anybody.
I don't think the Christmas lights are a lead issue.
No, wait a minute.
Take it up with the chamber.
That's not the city. You're in the wrong place.
Keep an arms-length distance from that.
And hot lights.
And well, next I have a presentation from our. School District Superintendent, Scott Tracy Doon. You wanna come up and personal? It is. Fill us in. Walk off.
Do you need a pointer?
Yeah, I will. I'll get it. Yeah.
No, I just have to put it over. Yeah, there's two things here. So this here where the camera for the public from Zoom. And for you, our sound system runs along here. Just so they can hear it.
You have to project.
Yeah.
There we go.
It might work best if you stood over there because then you're facing most of them.
Right, yeah.
Here, I'll give you my, my chair and I'll move it a little.
Oh, no, I'm sure. I was just waiting for.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So there's a green button in the center, go hit the pointer.
Okay.
And then it's.
Yeah, you should be able to advantage it. And it's just this back and forth.
No. Okay.
All right, good evening, everybody. Um tell us how good I'm.
Well, you just. Give us what you've got.
Okay. All right, good evening. I think I know most everyone. Um I'm Tracy Doon, the superintendent Cascade School District. And I am in my fifth year in Cascade, arriving here in two thousand nineteen. Although many of you probably know, my father graduated from Wenatchee High School and my grandparents and great-grandparents were here, so I roots in the area. Um what I am showing you this night is kind of talking about last school year and a little bit about this school year. I was supposed to present in October, a little earlier in the school year, and unfortunately lost my mom. And so thank you to everyone for allowing me to adjust the date. But this should catch you up a little bit on where, what, what happened last year and how we started off the school year. So I'm gonna do a little bit of a year in review from last year. So we started off our school year last year with a new soccer field in Beaver Valley called the Jim Adamson Soccer Field. As you all know, the Cascade School District is very large geographically. The city of Leavenworth is a part of our district, but we go, we include playing like Wenatchee, Chatham, Drive-In, at Bluewood. We're big. It's nice that we can offer this opportunity for students to play. Last year was very exciting in that salad bars came back. Part of what happened during COVID is we haven't had individually packaged salads. And so it was a small thing that was a big thing that we just. And so it was a small thing that was a big thing that we could have salad bars again, kind of like when the first school bus came back. Uh, post, you know, hybrid or post closure, having salad bars back was kind of a piece of normalcy last year. We also started our composting program, which was very exciting. Um, we started down in Peshawastan Elementary School for two main reasons. One is they have the most food waste because according to the federal guidelines, the, the little children don't get to pick how much food they get. They just get what they get and they don't have big appetites. So there's a lot of food waste. And there were fewer bears. So we were like, well, spring break, fewer bears, we're gonna start composting down at Peshawastan. And surprisingly, even our four-year-olds in our transitional kindergarten program, they did a great job with the composting. We figured, well, four-year-olds can do it, we can all do it. So we grew our composting program up through twelfth grade. Um, and we're very proud of that. We have a great partnership with Winton Manufacturing. Far as we know, we're the only school district in Eastern Washington to have a, a district-wide composting program. So we're kinda, we're excited about it. Now it's even better with the new bear-safe garbage cans. So, you know, we feel good about it and we try to encourage other people in the community to do it as well.
Tracy is Waste Loop involved in that?
Absolutely, yes. We've had a great partnership with Waste Loop and actually we've had some partner grants together. And one of them last year from the Department of Ecology uh, that we partnered on, they were actually able to create a curriculum so we could teach children about composting in our elementary schools. Our Coed House, which is our preschool that is situated at the middle school, where the big kids from child development come and help out um, is a demonstration site located in the state of Washington. So people come in from all over the state to take a look at our preschool and, uh, well, I think we're in the third year now of being a demonstration site, but it was again demonstration site last year. It was nice last year because people could come visit in person. The year before, there were a lot of videos people would watch, but it was pretty neat to see like all of this uh firsthand.
Tracy, on the composting, did you explore ways to get the kids to maybe eat more food and just throw it away?
Uh, well, the little kids, um, you know, it would require pizza every day.
I'm sure there's more they like.
Oh, we have a really new, we have a good uh food services director right now. She's named Sherry. And she's actually doing a lot to pay attention to menu development and things that the kids are interested in. And so that is a piece of it, is what do kids want to eat?
Yeah.
Um, but we're also trying to sneak in healthy habits. And it just depends on the day. Sometimes they're just excited to go play outside, which we do encourage as well.
Don't they, oh, they play, they eat and then they play? Don't they play and then eat? Build up an appetite?
They usually eat and then they go out to recess.
Oh, I thought they played and then ate, so they'd come back with that.
Well, they usually have more than one recess, so it depends on how you're counting the day.
Okay, thanks.
Good question.
Yeah.
Last year, uh, as you all know during COVID, the vaccination mandate was part of what happened to school districts. That was really hard for us in the sense that uh vaccination mandates are typically part of healthcare and not typically part of schools. So we had to put a whole new process in place with less time than the medical people did. So it was really, really, really tough to create that new system. Last year, the vaccination mandate turned into a recommendation, which just purely procedurally was helpful. Um, but we had a good vaccination rate in our school system. It's not that, but that, that was kind of an apparatus that did not exist pre-COVID in our schools. However, we had a really big hit with the flu last year. During the COVID pandemic, we had almost no flu. And last year, we had a really bad case of the flu and so we had to partner with the medical center and try to get through that. We have really good school nurses, thank goodness. But the flu was a big deal for us last year, so hopefully it won't be as much this year. We have something called multi-tiered systems of support, which is a way to support students academically, emotionally, behaviorally, when they need extra support. And last year, we joined a cohort from the state of Washington so that we can learn from other districts across the state about what we need to do to make sure that kids don't slip through the cracks. So we're in here too of that right now. Last year, our cross-country teams won the league and district championships. So that's one fun picture. Uh, last year, our school board won the small district board of the year for the state of Washington, so we were really proud of our school board. We do a lot of outdoor learning in Cascade. Um, just fast forwarding to this year a little bit. We actually just won an, another award, which is being uh named Field STEM District of the Year. So that was very exciting, but we've had a lot of training in our schools about how to take kids outside and how to really think about learning in outdoors. Uh, I like, I always like to show winter pictures because if you remember the previous year, we had a big blizzard with like four pieces of, it probably flashed, probably PTSD for y'all. So this is just kind of a fun picture from winter with getting ready. So I know you all had that big snow conversation, which I took note of. And that we have some unrecognized flooding at our middle school, so good information for me. Uh, but we'll be ready to go for winter this year too. Uh, we had a winter toy joint for uh last year in which uh families who are low income, the kids can come shopping. So they get identified and then all these toys are donated and then they all get to come and shop and so it helps them have a great holiday. We're getting ready to have ours next week.
You still taking donations and if so, why?
Um, I'm sure we are. Do you have a donation?
Sure, I can go buy something.
Uh, Alicia Gonzalez, our uh district social worker is organizing that. And so you donated to Alicia at the high school. I'm sure we're getting good ones. Uh, here we have our, um, Dr. Markley for King Assembly. One thing I really loved about our assembly last year is it kind of integrated the arts as well as like speeches and everything. And we now have a sign language program, so students have the opportunity to take Spanish or American Sign Language. So we had kids signing along with the songs. It was just super touching. I don't know if y'all know, but we have Lunar New Year is a very uh fun tradition at Beaver Valley School in Plain. Here's a picture from that from last year. We had an elementary career uh college night last year, so we're trying to get kids to think about careers from the youngest age on. We had a lot of community partners there, so really grateful to everyone who partnered with us. We talk a lot about field STEM and outdoor learning, but we also have a lot of uh STEM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and that uh, other than in the outdoors. So here are some examples of uh earthquake simulation project that happens in sixth grade. And then here are some kiddos who did a project all about rovers in the first grade.
Lunar, like planetary rovers?
Yeah. Uh, learning walks are something that I do with administrators, uh going into different classrooms and just checking out what instruction looks like, just doing checkpoints. Those are just a couple of pictures.
My boy.
Oh, great, yeah. So here's just another picture of our soccer team that did really well last year. We have certificated and classified staff of the year, certificate of our teachers or counselors and things like that. So Michael Beaky was our teacher of the year last year and Renee Moore was our classified employee of the year. She was a par educator at Almanack. Just here are some pictures of the arts. The arts are a big deal in our district, so the outdoors is a big deal. Also, the arts are a big deal. We have quite a portfolio for a district our size. Uh, Knowledge Bowl was in second place last year. The year prior, they were state champions, so wish them luck this year. Our technology student association also did great, even had four students go on to nationals. Our greenhouse is up and running. We have a plant science class. We partnered with Cascade Conservation and Upper Valley Med where we grew vegetable starts and donated them to the community cupboard. I'm hoping to have an official ribbon cutting this year. We haven't had one yet, so crossing my fingers that we'll have one in the spring.
Is that Mr. Bard?
What's that?
Mr. Bard.
Actually, that's Mr. Connor.
Okay, but he did it last year.
Um, Mr. Bard has worked with it, so Mr. Connor has his actual plant science.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Bard did the natural resources. You may know that the Earth Space Project, we have this big project in partnership with Blue Origin, which is uh, Jeff Bezos's space company. And they actually zoom in with the kids and give them these projects to do and then the kiddos uh, create this whole thing about going to Mars and then they actually come out and judge. Uh, that's been going on four years so far. Uh, Mrs. Haberberger has been the reigning champion. Her classes won all four years in a row. But we're so excited to be one of the very few school districts that has actual scientists and engineers from Blue Origin partner with our district. And that's just one of those small world things. We're back in Oak Ridge. We were working with NASA and then somebody I knew's nephew worked at Blue Origin. And so I was like, hey, you know this person, they ended up partnering with us. So, cool, we love it. And the kids do such a great job. Uh, for early learning in the community, we actually partnered with Head Start, our Coed House preschool that I also mentioned, already mentioned. Mountain Sprouts and our own transitional kindergarten program to do kind of a, a fair so that people can get to know what early learning opportunities we have. It's coordinated so that people can see what do I need, what works for my family, and then we can all partner together to support the children. Our middle school students designed a demonstration garden last year. You may have seen it in front of our school, where the middle school. We partnered with Shoreland County to have a low-water demonstration garden, so really excited about that. It has been planted now officially, so we're excited about that. Uh, the Jockathon came back two years ago at Almanack. Last year at PE. Um, actually, they raised so much money at PE, twenty thousand dollars. They got to do a thing called Prank a Teacher. So I got a bunch of videos dumped all over my. But we're just really excited to have these things come back. We don't take them for granted anymore. Last year, we're excited to be, we have a great partnership with Fire Department. All of the cadets, uh, and their red card certifications last year and five of the ten were hired this last summer.
So wow.
Sixth grade camp came back with great partnership. We called Timber. We actually got a grant from the state of Washington to pay for it. And we had kiddos out there fun just a great time. We have a migrant parent advisory council. We have a decent number of students who would be considered migrant. And we have a one hundred percent graduation rate for migrant students, which is really something special. Another thing that we're really proud of last year on the state assessment, our school district exceeded the state average in all grade levels in both English and in math.
It's great, wow.
Yeah, we're happy about that. That's probably not a good thing to do. Uh, this is just a silly thing, but something we like to say. If you go to itch.com, uh, we're considered the best school district in Shoreland County, so we're excited. We won't mention who's number two. But we're happy. So, you know, anytime people give positive reviews, we're, we're happy about that. But we do need to recuperate some enrollment from pre-COVID, so those kinds of things do help. Uh, Beaver Valley, one of our parents is a mural artist. And so she helped do a full Beaver Valley mural refresh, so check that out if you have a chance. Here's our graduating class last year, class of twenty twenty-three.
How many graduated?
Well, we have really close to a hundred, so right around in that area. One of the fun traditions we have is a kindergarten uh graduation. So that's the little fingers there, so it's really fun to see the littles and then the babes graduate. And then we started this tradition during COVID at this eighth grade transition of outdoors with lots of like clapping and sound makers and fun, which is super perfect for that age. And so that's the transition from eighth grade to high school, right? Uh, this summer, we sent some uh teachers to a training about the program called ABING, which stands for advancement via individual determination, which is some support we provide to students who need a little bit of extra support to be college-ready. Um, I'm sure you may recognize some of these faces. We have had people transition out of the district, one of whom is Dwight Rummey, who uh lives in Peshawastan, but who was our business manager and has now retired. Uh, we have a leadership training this summer. Here's me with our team. And then now I want to talk about this school year just briefly. Probably the biggest kind of thing we have to attend to this year is our budget. You've heard of that, I'm sure, in many school districts across the state, but we're all kind of being faced with the same situation. Most school districts across the state have not recuperated pre-COVID enrollment. We've rebounded a little bit from our hybrid year, twenty twenty-one was our low. But we haven't gotten fully back. Then we, uh, we did receive money during COVID from the federal government called ESER. That money is now gone. Then we had massive inflation. Inflation has infected pretty much everything in our school district from uh salaries to the cost of our insurance, to the cost of materials and supplies. And we have, you know, the levy is what it is. Which is uh the local funding that provides about twenty percent of our budget. So all of that said, we're very tight right now. Or we're really, uh, we're very tight. We have to think about how do we reduce spending, how do we make sure we continue to attract students to our district? And we also need to think about increasing efficiency, but that's kind of where we are. We're in a tight budget situation. Maybe some of you've heard of the phrase S R Cliff. That's the education we go for. Uh, many districts across the state are in a situation or even worse. Uh, but we are in kind of a tight situation now.
Tracy, do you have any theories about why enrollment is down?
Uh, what we noticed for enrollment was that during COVID, there were a number of people who chose to homeschool their children. And I would say that's across the nation and not everybody returned. I would say that's probably one of our biggest things. Another problem, or I don't know if the word problem is correct, but uh, Running Start is a program in which a student can go down to Wenatchee Valley College during high school and even though they still have the funds from the school district, they all, we lose one hundred percent of their funding to Wenatchee Valley College. So when a student chooses to go to Running Start, it actually is a drain on our resources. That's something that just hasn't been figured out in the state.
Yeah, because they can graduate from.
They can graduate from Cascade High School and they can graduate from Wenatchee Valley College potentially. But they have to satisfy our requirements, but we do not receive any funding. So it's just, it's a drain on our resources. So Running Start is, is hard. We also have a college and a high school program in which students can obtain a lot of college credits while they're in high school. I think they're close to one hundred credits right now. Uh, and then that way the student's still considered, you know, fully Cascade High School. But Running Start, they're actually basically considered a college student. But we do, uh, we still consider them our student. You know, we still give them the opportunity to do all the things, but it actually does create a drain.
So those are like AP classes then?
Uh, quality in the high school would be advanced placement. It would be, we call it dual enrollment, where you're involved both in the college class and high school class at the same time, such as crowding list. You can get a credit from the University of Washington at the same time to get that's the high school credit. That's just an example. We also have industry certifications. I mentioned fire science there, so you get an actual, you know, red cards that would be considered a post-secondary opportunity while in high school. And we have a lot of what we call articulation vision, such as we're working online with American Sign Language, so you can get Wenatchee Valley College credit while you're going to class at Cascade High School. So we have a bunch of different opportunities to get those college credits while going to high school. Uh, but sometimes people choose to go down to Wenatchee Valley College completely. And that can be right for some families, uh. But it is a, it is a drain on our, on our resources, quite honestly.
But so if the city, from a broader perspective, created policies to get more, to incentivize families with children to move here, to live here, it would indirectly help the school?
Absolutely. I, I think we hear it all the time that housing is a very major issue for not only our families, but also our staff.
Yeah.
Uh, so if, you know, if the city were doing things to make it a little bit more affordable to live here or to have your family here, I personally think this is a great place for a child grow up.
Right.
Kids play outside all year round. It could be hot outside, cold outside, in between. A great community, beautiful place, great schools. It's a great place to raise a family, but people have to be able to afford it. So that's a challenge.
Thank you.
Uh we have a strategic framework. These are the core values of our school district. Every student, quality education, connected relationships, inclusive diversity, outdoors, analytical creativity. I probably alluded to different pieces of that during my presentation. But we try to connect what we do in with the core values of this district. This strategic uh framework was put in place uh in twenty twenty, believe it or not. During my first year, we managed to pull this off even when uh schools closed. But we've been connecting everything we do to that framework. Um I, this is just picking one of those out, which is quality education. We prepare people for the future with a system of high-quality education that makes learning relevant and useful, delivered by very professionals and a technology-driven environment. Anyhow. Uh we believe a lot in having a quality education. I believe that a student deserves a great education, whether they live in a rural environment, an urban environment, or suburban environment. And we work really, really hard to get a great education right there. I'm just gonna kind of there. That we've talked, I've talked so much. I've been talking so long. But one thing I want everyone to know is that we really care about students feeling that they belong. And that belonging can be everywhere, including in elementary, like we talked about earlier. This is Eddie, who's making cute little pancakes, which maybe attracts people that you do. But we, I think one thing we do really well here is we get to know our kids. We care about them as individuals. We care about their families. And it's, and we really want each and every child's assistance. So these are in our priorities for this year, improving academic and post-secondary success. Outdoor learning, providing support in our fourth grade. So that was just kind of like my very fast run through of last year and kind of the start of this year. Uh do you have any questions for me?
Tracy, I was gonna ask you, so where's our, our total um school, uh yeah, the student population as of this year?
Uh as of uh, I believe yesterday, we were at about one thousand one hundred ninety-nine.
Okay.
Uh now that, there's a difference between head count and FTE. FTE stands for full-time equivalency. I'm maybe new to full-time equivalency. Head count could be a little higher, like one thousand two hundred six, something like that.
Good.
I would say compared to pre-COVID, we're down about thirty to fifty.
Hmm, okay. Slowly coming back, but very slowly.
It's come back a little uh during, uh we definitely had a low during the hybrid year, which was the twenty twenty-one school year was our low.
Okay.
So we have recuperated from, it's been exciting to welcome people back. Uh but we haven't recuperated as much as we'd like.
Thanks.
Do you have the stats on the recoup? Elementary, middle, or high school? It's kind of dispersed through our system. I would say for this particular school year, uh our challenges are, I mean, our lower than expected enrollment would be first grade for some reason. And then uh I'm talking about high school, Running Start. Now, the thing about a smaller district with approximately average classes of one hundred is we have what's called bubbles. So sometimes we'll have a big class of like a hundred and twenty kids and sometimes we'll have a little class with about eighty. And that just depends on who had babies born. And that's just the fluctuation you get in a smaller district. So um right now, those are kind of our lower areas, especially that first grade is a smaller bubble. But that's kind of what we call it, is a bubble bigger size.
Right.
Well, thank you.
Look at that last slide again quickly, your priorities, because one of them in the school I grew up in, the high school, was uh sports and fitness was one of their priorities. And it seems to tie into academic health and emotional health and psychological health. And I would love to see Cascade get a little more focused to health and fitness and like sports.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. We've kind of tied it in with the outdoor area of our priorities. But we do have the new athletic director this year, Tim Barnes, and at least kind of our new formulation around that is because we recognize that we need to put more attention into our athletic program. Because a lot of, we have some really unique opportunities, like that means school districts that teach skating and snowshoeing during PE.
Right.
There are in a lot of school districts with the skis, the boarding club, or mountain biking club, or equestrian team. But there's a lot that's special about Friday night football. And so we need to not only have our unique special things that are so great in our area, but we kind of need to go back to the basics. But I'm really excited about our new athletic director, Bob Zaway, he's great.
Good, thank you.
We have some great coaches now and our teams are growing. And I feel like we're kind of getting growing, moving up next right now.
I realize I'm asking this without you having numbers in front of you. So if you need to answer anecdotally, I totally understand. But when you're talking about inflation and the way that the cost increases are hitting everyone from all sides, I get it. I'm wondering if there's, in your mind, any one cost increase or cost driver that has kind of risen above the rest, or is it all just death by a thousand cuts?
Is, partially is the cost of staffing, because the inflationary factor is determined by the state of Washington affects how we advocate people. And I don't know if you understand how funding works for schools. But the state only sends a certain portion of a particular person's salary. And then they don't even fund all the positions. Like, for example, the state will find the two percent of the school psychologists. But we need an entire human, right, we need a school psychologist. So what ends up happening is the state says, hey, your inflationary factor is, obviously, it's up five percent. But they'll only send five percent of what's called the prototypical school model. And so they're only sending five percent of what they count as necessary, even though that is real. So what that means is that the rest of that five percent has to come from everywhere else. And it's just really, really difficult. So staffing's a big deal. We are a service industry, so most of our budget goes into personnel. So that would be one big one. But another one that really surprises this year was our insurance.
Yeah.
So our insurance has just jumped. And it jumped at an unexpected level. Uh in fact, it was not a hundred thousand dollars more than we're expecting it to be.
Which was two.
That, and unfortunately, they only notified us after our budget had passed. So that was really difficult for us and for other school districts in the state. So I would say insurance was if there's something that stands out in my head, it's when I got that insurance bill. The staffing one, I kind of knew what was going on, but it just hits our budget so hard because again, the state only funds a portion of what they tell us we need to pay. So sorry, I have that too much in the weeds.
Two, thank you. Fuel contracts?
Fuel contracts. So fuel is interesting. We're actually working on that right now. Uh we kind of go with a state-approved list, but we just actually bought the first propane bus. So that's brand new for us. So it's gonna be an energy efficient bus. We're not quite ready for an electric bus uh in our snow-ridden area. But we're trying to propane bus. Eastmont has something like seven of them. They've been very successful, low emissions. And so we're actually kind of entering the world of propane.
So for fuel.
Yeah, for fuel. So when you said fuel, I jumped to propane.
Yeah, have you spoken to Link about electric? They seem to have it pretty successfully.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that'll be in the future, but right now we're starting with propane. We've seen that work for school buses and and so that's what we're trying.
Tracy, do they still also only pay um, no, not pay all of the classified staff also?
Correct. No, classifieds are given their share. As far as what the state actually costs. Classifieds are even harder.
Yep.
As you know, so for example, special education, there's due to special needs. The amount of funding we receive for the students means it's very, very expensive. But to end on a positive, there are a lot of great things going on. Uh kids are good. They're happy. They're back at school. They're learning their group. I mean, they have great childhoods. And it's just really a pleasure to get to see the happy day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Yeah, great information.
All right, we'll move on now to resolutions, ordinances, orders, and other business. First one is I intend, and this is the revolution dealing with the pathways plan that I brought up a couple of weeks ago at your study sessions. Hopefully, uh we have any questions or anything answered there. But if we've got any more, we'd happy to try to answer them. Otherwise, I would end the motion.
I have a question for you, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, for the, for the total funding of this project, it says that it's one point two million dollars. How did the city land on a hundred thousand dollars?
Um, we landed on just by requesting from those communities of that were engaged and involved and had an interest. Um, we're, we're using lodging tax and we're, as you know, we're ones, we're the big tigers when it comes to lodging tax. So this is a bigger share than Cashmere and the bigger city and and you know, NEAD knows that are contributing much smaller amounts. Um but this puts us up with the county level, basically, um in support. But um we feel that it would be a big boon to be able to tie us to other communities and be a boon for both our residents and visitors, so.
Would much of the pathway be located within the city limits?
It would draw, it, it would come into the city, but then it would connect with the whole, point of it is connecting down to Bishastin and then from there down to Ketchikan and then down to so it's driving the whole valley. So um, yeah.
This is just for planning, right, Mayor?
This is just
No land acquisition.
This is just, just identifying and getting the route down where we could go out and get the dollars to do those acquisitions. So, but it's a county-wide effort. So it's, it's um that's why the figure's so high, because it's tying the whole thing together.
Would they tie in a public facilities type tax? Not, since it's not a facility, but could they tie in a type of tax like that, like a Red Hawkens thing?
There's, I mean, I think, I think when it comes down to when it, when it gets kind of put into play and whatever, they're gonna look at a lot of different options. But, I mean, right now, the, the fact is, there is a lot of of um funding available, if you would, but it's, it's you gotta grab it kind of while it's there, right? It's still this federal dollars. And so that's why the push is on um to get this thing drafted and put together so that we can go after the rest of the funding to, to get it created.
Carl, you've got, this, this is a one point two million dollar project just for design. How does the fifty thousand dollars each year fit into that? I mean, what are they, one thing I was wondering is, are we gonna get updates on how they're using this money?
No, you're, there'll, there'll be a public process and you'll get, we'll, we'll get uh presentations on the develop, as it goes, just like we do with other studies and things. And what their, what the outcomes would be and all of that. So, yeah, no, we would get, we would be engaged along in the process as well.
Because I was just thinking, the next item up is for Alpha, which has a very broken out, like the Alpine, I mean, like um the Autumnlee Festival has this all broken out. I would think along the way, we'd have something like that from this organization that shows where the money's going, what they're doing, what they're doing with it.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely. And this is um they'll, they'll be going out shortly to um solicitations for uh, you know, the consultants that would be in and Tred's gonna be involved is, is working with him as well to lead some of the public process, I know. Um, as uh ones that are engaged in that kind of activity, so.
So the one point two million is an estimate for the planning portion?
Yeah, yeah. And it's basically what we've got commitments from and what that what they were, basically got the feedback if, when they looked at the scope of what they were gonna be asking for.
Did this hundred thousand uh push us in the door, a door we can't get out of? If, uh you know, if we should decide not to?
It doesn't, we're not committed beyond this. This is, this is just to get us what hopefully would be then something that we could um, yeah, actually see some, some actual pathway.
So it's Waterville, Cashmere, the uh
Not Waterville. This is Shalan Manson. It's, it's from Shalan Manson down and then, and Wenatchee. Um
So which counties are in, which, which are in Shalan?
This is, this is
Shalan?
Shalan is Shalan.
Well, it says Dash Douglas.
Shalan Douglas Transportation Council is the lead on this, but it's dealing with this in Shalan.
And so what, what cities are involved in this?
Um, all of the cities.
All of them.
Yeah.
Waterville, that's
No.
There's Douglas, they're in Douglas County, aren't they? Yeah.
But this is just Shalan. It's Shalan, it's a Shalan Douglas Transportation Council. It's a joint council. But this study is pulling together Shalan.
So who's on that council? What, what, you have a word that's on that council?
Leavenworth is represented.
What else?
Um, the council, um, there's, there's a whole, Wasdott's involved, Link's involved. Um, the, the counties, the cities, all of them have representation on this Shalan Douglas Transportation. And they're the ones that that divide up the, the federal transportation dollars that come into our area. So that's what they're doing. And this is, this is non-automobile transportation. So, and it comes from, a big chunk of this is federal grants to do this study. But we need to come up with the local match. And so that's what ours is providing, is some of that local match.
And if somehow this, this doesn't finish out, it flops, or I don't know what the word would be.
We've got a nice
A hundred thousand dollars is gone, no matter what happens.
We'll have a nice plan that hopefully somebody will pick up at some point.
And the county commissioners support this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the counties, the court, Shalan County is a hundred thousand. I don't, I don't know the full breakdown of, of all the other cities, but
But the port on the land?
But we're, we're one of the big ones. Our a hundred thousand is one of the big ones because we, we have the most hotel public.
Can you maybe provide us with that information? The breakout, the breakdown and whatever.
Sure.
Uh that was, because I, I'd like to see it.
Well, yeah, and like I said, you'll get other, other things once this gets rolling and they award it and things. And we'll get presentations from them on what their plan is and it'll get, you know. Yeah, it's not just watching it go out the door. We'll, we'll be engaged and involved. It'll be a public process as part of it, so.
Have they got a timeline when this is gonna start, Carl?
Um, I hope, they're, they're getting out that, I hope, right at the first of the year, so.
Okay.
It'll be a, it'll be over a year process, so.
I guess my question, one of my questions is, there's just how this fits together. The one point two million is kind of how we're gonna design it. How does our contributions fit into that? Is it making up part of the one point two million?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, all right.
Yeah. That's, that's what we're doing. We're, that's our, our portion of it.
It's probably five or six months ago that I was asked to attend one of their meetings via Zoom, talking about this particular project. The mayor was unavailable, so they're asking me if we would be willing to spend some of our lodging tax dollars on this project. Um, I said that we needed to create it. We needed to make sure that there was a nexus, ensure there was, there was a nexus within city limits in order for us to justify the use of lodging tax dollars. And so there will be a large part of this pathway built in Leavenworth, but it will drop people, as the mayor said, from the path into downtown. So this will be a destination for those who do end up using this multimall um path.
The number one demand on our twenty twenty-one recreational needs assessment.
Trails. It's a priority with the Land Trust, too. The Land Trust's done a bunch of strategic planning over the years. This was their number one thing.
I think it was either oh eight or oh nine, the city did the Upper Valley Regional Trails Plan. And that was just the first leg from Leavenworth heading towards Wenatchee.
Yeah.
And at that time, the county was wanting to put together a master plan for the entire area. And just so much happened and changed and it just went away. So this is, I, I would assume a recreation of that. And they got the federal funding, which is huge, but know that this is just a master plan at one point two million.
Yep.
Construction, hundred plus million.
But this is transportation project, so they'll be tapping into transportation dollars to make this happen. Um, the town that I last worked for, Mass Um, the town that I last worked for, Massachusetts, we had two rail trails coming through town. We funded the design, but then the mass DOT funded a hundred percent of the construction.
Chantel, are we looking at? I'm just a rough, rough guess here on, on hotel motel. Is that like three million a year?
Well,
Also Manos?
We're a little higher than that. We're currently sitting with six million in reserves.
On lodging?
Tax.
Okay, that's a reserve.
Your hundred K is
Yeah, I just was trying to get an idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can tell you that. Three point eight million is what I've budgeted for this year in revenue.
Okay.
Outgoing, though, is two point seven in operations. So we are expected to spend a big portion of what we're bringing in. And then we do have capital. So this year's kind of a break even year, but we've grown the fund over the last five years to the six million dollar mark.
Okay.
We're in good shape.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution eighteen, twenty twenty-three pathways plan in a local agreement.
Second.
We brought Jayce in, seconded by Marco. Any other discussion?
That's not a question.
All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. All right, Autumn Lee Festival Association Partnership.
I'm standing at the podium because my back is killing me. I want to stand behind my chair and dress you, but I can't sit any longer.
Better than laying down.
It is better. I am upright. Um, so tonight, we're, um, I'm, I'm asking the city council to approve an increase to the Autumn Lee Festival. Uh, we've been supporting this, uh, organization, which is running Mark, which runs our marquee, but very festival every year. Um, we've been funding them out of lodging tax for a number of years. The reason, the main reason for this ask for an increase is due to the, um, uh, the detours that we have to, um, put up in order to have the festival come out on the highway too. Um, and now there's been a change by DOT. They require a flagger at every curb along the detour route. So we have two detour routes. Um, one brings people who are coming through Leavenworth and heading west, they'll come out East Leavenworth Road to the roundabout at, uh, two. And then folks are coming the other direction. We'll go through the residential areas, um, and, uh, head, head west. I think that's one of those. I might have gotten that first. But it doesn't really matter. The point is we have a lot of turns along these, uh, along these, uh, detour routes, which increase the cost of our traffic control in the form of ladders. Um, and the Autumn Lee Festival asked us to assist them with this additional cost and Seth is asking you to support Autumn Lee Festival this time.
Can the DOT require us to put flaggers on not highway? Like just within residential streets?
Because for use of the highway.
The DOT has to approve the detour route because of the highway. So in other words, we're, we're displacing
They can still dictate what we do on our residential streets?
My bicycle, you saw it more.
I mean, the highway, I understand.
Yeah.
I defer to the expertise of others. They're, because they're displacing highway traffic. So for example, um, like, for example, there's a project, when I was at East Wenatchee, when they did a detour off the state highway, they went on city streets. We did, we did a detour agreement where they actually improved their roadways due to the increased traffic. And they had to tell us what we had to do basically, uh, because they're presumably, we had to accommodate commercial vehicles, so we can't just have send a semi through town and just hopefully best. So that's why DOT is just being, they're being cautious.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point out something on page one of nine, the first page down eleven or one, 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 I, 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 one, one, one point three, um, for employment, um, in the last line of the, of the partner, of the, one of those should disappear.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
I got it.
Under
Employment.
Employment.
A. Of the, of the This is a typo.
Yeah.
I can change it.
Any other questions?
This is thorough review, Sharon.
Jump right out on my
I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve the twenty twenty-four partnership agreement between the city of Leavenworth and the Washington State Autumn League Festival in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by, seconded by Zeke. Any other discussion?
Start a flag at the partner.
Okay, all in favor, let me see your hands. I'm serious. Unanimously.
If we go out and win fourteen while standing.
While you're standing?
Good for your back.
Sure. I'll, uh, if nobody objects, we'll go ahead and let you take fourteen.
Okay, so, um, Shannon Lennox was here earlier during the study session. She's our parking, uh, horseman, our parking manager, our program manager. And one of our worst complaints from our constituents who are coming into Leavenworth or the visitors is, um, using the, the, uh, meters, uh, on the on-street spot. So one of the primary reasons that people have a hard time using these meters is that we've all trained, been trained to put our chip in first with our credit card. And these meters don't work that way. Um, you put the, uh, magnetic strip up on the right, which has your chip facing out, and people don't look at the little display. It shows them exactly how to do it. And so our businesses along Purple Street mainly have complained to us that they seem like they are parking ambassadors. They have people coming to them complaining that constantly about the use of our parking meter. So trying to, um, improve the customer experience, we don't get many complaints about the kiosks that we have in our parking lots. So this request, uh, of twenty-six thousand dollars that will come out of the Park Enterprise Fund is to take, um, the four kiosks that we currently have in our park, in our pay box, and six kiosks that we have, um, in storage right now. And to upgrade the display for all of these, so it'll be a larger display, we'll reprogram it so that we can add additional languages. Uh, we'll put at least six languages onto these things. Um, and we will replace along Commercial and Ninth Street, the meters with, choose replaced kiosks. That will serve fifteen spots each or so. Um, and we are ready to go with this. You just need your approval.
Can we get the meter company to buy those back?
Uh, we, I, I don't know.
Right, but it's possible.
Yeah, so.
But it does also give us stock for the other ones that aren't
That's true, but like, if
We recently this summer replaced all of our four button meters with six button meters, hoping that that would solve the problem. Uh, we originally, when we installed these meters from this company, they were six button meters. We had issues with condensation in the meters. Uh, they weren't watertight. We set them back. They said there's four meter buttons. Um, we weren't quite pleased with those. We, they spent this summer replacing all the four meters with six meters. People are still not happy. They still have to put the chip facing out. People just don't want to do the chip facing.
So is it, as an executive action, if this kiosk replacement works really well for the meters and would it make sense to then replace all the meters or kiosks?
That would be this, the pilot for replacing the, the current meters for the parking spaces with kiosks.
And then have the company say, look, this didn't really work out.
We are looking forward to get out.
Thank you. That's all.
We don't want to be used to that. Yeah, no.
All right, thank you.
As far as accidentally buy back, we might be able to find one of their customers.
Give all the merchants their phone number. Say call. Get them.
Yeah.
This is wonderful, Shanny. I can wait.
Yeah.
So yeah, this is coming out of Park Enterprise and we have a hefty buck balance in parking.
We do.
I'd entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the quote to move forward with the purchase of new parking kiosks for downtown.
Second. By your hands, by Sharon. Any other discussion? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. All right, now, we can go back. And we'll move back up to the wastewater collection treatment facility improvements phase three project, change orders four and five. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Florrie, council members, good evening. This action item uh, before you this evening is associated with two change orders um, for the wastewater collection treatment facility phase three project. That's our cure to place pipe project, C I P. Project where we're lining approximately thirteen thousand feet of mainline sewer. Uh, but I kind of go in reverse order. I'll explain in a moment. First, we're going to discuss change orders four and five. I'll give a brief update on change orders one through three. In summary, change orders one through three, three is not finalized and one and two were divinamous. It'll need council approval. So change order four is in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, six hundred dollars and eighty-six cents. A history in this, so this is associated, associated with Shoal Street. We initially knew we, there was a spot repair of a section of mainline sewer. However, when our contractor excavated the pipe to perform this spot repair, the pipe just disintegrated and they kept excavating and working their way out. And although they had to replace three hundred and twenty-five feet of mainline sewer. As a result of that, that's why the cost is, is so high. But also, we, in an effort to keep transitioning to be more proactive, and this is aligned with our integrated capital improvement program, we went ahead and replaced all the sewer ladders to get them out of the paved area. So despite that not being necessarily the city's responsibility, it was just a proactive measure because if we reconnected these side sewers underneath a new road that we just paved, there's a, there's a, a chance that they will fail and have to re-execute the roadway. So of the two hundred and five thousand USDA rural development is going to cover a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this change order. Um, however, the remaining balance, the fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-three will come out of the C sewer fund.
To the USDA rural grant?
Yeah, we have a, it's a, that overall nineteen point five million dollar low interest loan slash grant package.
Okay, that's, I wanted to make sure that's what we were talking about. Thank you.
So that, that's change order four. Before I go to five, I can answer questions on four prior to going to five.
Um, this is allied, right?
Right, this allied.
And that's why they, it smells like solvent when they're doing their work because they're curing it in place with the, like an epoxy.
Yeah, it's a polyurethane.
Okay, that's different. Yeah, I get it. Okay, thanks. That answers.
So the total bill for change order four is that two hundred and five thousand dollars or less than that because of a grant?
No, uh, good question. So that's the total amount of the change order that I'm seeking approval on. Uh, the grant will cover a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of it and the remainder will
We've already spent the loan, if you remember, all our loan dollars are gone. So all the money that we're spending now on the, on the phase three is all coming from the grants that we got.
So the total cost of change order four is more than two hundred and five thousand dollars?
No, I, my apologies. I'm not explaining it pretty well. So the total, the total cost of change order is two hundred and five thousand. That includes both the RD eligible work and the non-eligible work. So of the two hundred and five thousand, RD's going to cover a hundred and fifty thousand, and then the fifty-five thousand remainder will, the city will cover with its sewer, sewer fund.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're just approving the total contract price and then we'll fill in the gap uh, after the, after the grant.
Correct. So we will pay the contractor and when we seek reimbursement, we'll only seek reimbursement for a hundred and fifty thousand. And RD has already given us, they've already approved this prior to moving forward. Just because the work already took place.
There's no budget amendment needed with this. Is this line item has four point some million dollars sitting on it? And we have about four million remaining on the grant, so.
We have adequate reserves in the
It's potentially fifty grand.
Let's just let you spend it.
Yeah.
This lets you spend it.
Exactly, right, exactly. And then and before, uh, and if there's any more questions on four, so on five. And so change order number five is in the amount of sixty-four thousand, it's six hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents. This is one hundred percent eligible for reimbursement through rural development. So what we found, uh, we found multiple locations, I believe there were six, four to six where we had what they call external drops in our manholes. So what that is, you have envisioned a concrete manhole structure. And in order for this, the sewer line to have the proper grade and also have, because when you, when you have sewer discharge in a manhole, you don't want it discharged up in the manhole, have it splash around the manhole. This is going to cause odor issues.
Sure.
So you want the sewer to discharge in the bottom of the drop. So some manholes may have these external drops where sewer will hit the outside of the manhole, but then they drop. The pipe drops down to the bottom of the manhole and it discharges in the bottom. Well, you can't, you can't line that with a sewer because can't, can't turn the sewer line, the lining material down at a ninety degree. So we then had to abandon those and put an internal drop. So that's what this change order is for. And once again, rural development will cover a hundred percent of this.
And that was just a flawed design from the beginning?
Uh, unfortunately, it's, it's sometimes they're good. Some, some older manholes were built that way.
Okay.
Not ideal.
Yeah, no, that's technology.
That's what they had. That's what they did there back then, right?
So actually the sewer does flow through the manhole?
Yeah, it does. Yep. And it drops behind and the drop pipe and then discharges the bottom.
Great.
New. Hey, we've got a couple of motions here.
Sorry, I mentioned change order one was approved, but that was an amount of two thou, just over two thousand dollars. So no factor there for council approval. And change order two was forty-six hundred dollars. And change order three is just adding working days, which will address when the schedule is modified.
Four five. Okay, um, the Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute change order number four associated with the wastewater collection and treatment facility improvements. Phase three project in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
Moved by Marco, seconded by Ann. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to execute change order number five associated with wastewater collection and treatment facility improvements, phase three project in the amount of sixty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars, forty-five cents.
Second.
Moved by Zeke, or seconded by Sharon. Good catch. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, Gary.
And for the professional services, bring the, the brain Osborne.
Thank you, getting there, Florrie. So this is an exciting project. It's partially funded at the moment, a little bit of backstory. So the Transportation Improvement Board has recognized our pavement needs in the city of Leavenworth. Um, and they're, they are willing to go to their board the first part of next month in December to ask for a potentially up to two million dollar grant to do a citywide scrub seal. So this would do a, so what a scrub seals treatment is, it's basically a, it's a heavy U V chip seal with the emulsion, the oil that they use is very thick. And so it'll just fill every nook and cranny. And then they'll do a traditional chip seal over top of it and then a fog seal. Um, for the untrained eye, it should look like asphalt, like so.
So it fills cracks and how long does it last?
So the, so the, the kind of the, it'll extend the life of our current roadways about five years. So it's a, just a preventive maintenance item. However, I mean, the funding, I mean, we've been hooked for a ten percent match in this, so we get two million dollars, I think two hundred thousand is.
Are we going to include our alleys?
That, this, this paid, paid services.
Really not great for skateboards.
Good act.
This is, uh, throughout the city, I mean, every single street, every pave.
So it's like a double shot.
Yeah.
It's a similar to double shot.
Yeah.
Sounds like it'd be smoother than our street.
Uh, yeah.
Low man.
It'd be smoother than what most have now.
And just to, just to clarify expectations, this is just for the design only. We still need board approval. Um, there's a likelihood the board will approve it, but there's a, a chance that they, they may not. So this is, this, this evening is just to approve the design contract. Um, which is, is it supplementing our on-call engineering contract with Ray Osborne?
But if we do this, we're going to move, probably move forward with the actual work, right?
We'll move forward. So the design is funded through the T I P. So they're going to fund it. We have a small match here. We'll, we owe twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
Which will come out by pretty fine.
And you don't have to really shut down streets for this. It's just a machine that does it and then you can pretty drive on it pretty quickly right after.
Uh, there, there'll be road closures.
Okay.
The applied material, then we have to do pavement margins too, so.
Okay, but not like a, the asphalt, like a replacement.
So, can you clarify? Cause I read twenty-five thousand, you said twenty-five.
Oh, that would be our match.
There's your business a grant. We only have to pay twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I did not understand that in the budget limit. Thank you.
Yeah, my apologies.
Um, so does the one sixty free go against the two hundred batches at separate?
I would say a good question. So, so that amount, so we are just supplementing an existing on-call contract with Ray Osborne. So not to exceed amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand. Only twenty-five thousand of this is tied to the project. The other amount is already the past previous projects that have come, so.
The answer's no.
That's right.
So if there's some chance I'm actually following this information, um, you know, we didn't want to do anything with the roads because of the infrastructure so bad beneath. So is this just kind of like a
Band-Aid.
But the thing Thing where the roads look better, we won't be the third worst in the state of Washington.
Right.
And yet if somebody's sewer thing breaks up, you still have you'll dig through that and and dig it out.
Correct.
And when are we are we looking at a timeline when we're actually going to start the infrastructure? So that that we will have the roads we want?
Good question. So right now we just kicked off our utility rate study, so that's going to be driven by that process a lot. That'll take. Most of next year to to complete. So we'll have road busts, C I B list, capital improvement project list. And so then we're running budget scenarios because that's the that's the. The driving factor is utilities. It's starting with the utilities replaced first. So this scrub seal, if it's approved, it'll happen next year.
But it buys this time though. So it could it it's so much more.
Yeah, it's just I just want to make sure I was following. Cause when we moved here fifty-seven years ago, the roads were all dirt and there were big tunnels. Jim Morden was mayor when. They've, you know, went through and and did that and we had wooden water mains and ours are down our street, all kinds of stuff, so.
And also when they did that even in the seventies, they didn't go down and put in proper subsurface.
It's just over the dirt.
Three inches of the three inches of the tremendous concrete.
They beat the heck out of the uh dirt roads and tunnels.
And Tom, do you have a? Possible ballpark figure when they would initiate this next year, like June, I mean, weather permitting, is it kind of like?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the the design will be completed way ahead of time and assuming we would get T I B approval. We had, we would have bid documents ready in just a couple of months. And so we bid this early and it would be quite frankly. Yeah, driven by the contractor's schedule. So okay, we bid it early, it likely would happen early summer.
Okay, hopefully.
I give a key to motion.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to sign professional services agreement supplement number five. In the not to exceed amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
It's a. By Sharon, seconded by, was that you, Jason?
No, Ty.
All right, can I ask questions?
I have one question.
Yeah, you need to have Gray and Osborne in this motion.
Good catch. Yeah, that that should be a specific to Gray.
So we you need to redo your motion. Add Gray and Osborne to this.
After here. Professional service agreement with. The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to sign professional services agreement with Gray and Osborne. Supplement number five in the not to exceed amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Second.
Second by Liz.
Going to keep things on.
Okay, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passing unanimously.
Thank you, council. And of course, Casey advised of when the T I B board first.
Okay, we'll move on to reports. Sharon?
It's gonna cobble together, but we'll see what happens. Um November eleven, um did the backpacking for over fifty lunches um for Erns. Um high school and F D. And I started in the right spot? No. Um eleven fourteen, excuse me, backpack school lunches over fifty. Eleven fourteen also went the the Leavenworth promotions lap retreat at Sleeping Lady. Um we'll pass this report to T bar when we get to T bars. On the sixteenth, Osborne playground committee, um we're moving ahead. And um it's kind of interesting. We get together two Thursdays a month. Um Tom's there with us and John Shons. And looking at. First, we put some things together and there's like a uh age five through twelve. Big thing like you see over the school, the slides, and there's a two to five. And also there's um a handicap, there's different equipment that handicap um youngsters can get on. And um we're kind of under a deadline to try to get things in in a certain time for. Percentages of of money that we can maybe have take off. Our goal is by the end of August. So um we're all looking forward to it where we can see the kids. Uh running and whatever and trying to go. I think we have the entrance step for. Uh just like when you walk over and you're going to, if you're walking towards the playground equipment. Back up a little bit more, the entrance is, I think we're going to kind of make it a. Kind of a round right there and um kind of come up with some ideas for. Um either some kind of thing that goes up and says, welcome to blah blah. Or um my favorite is to have some little small little, you know, animals that they make. Because I would have been the kid that was sitting there feeding grass to the deer that. So anyway, I I hope to see that myself personally. Um on the twentieth, the Shalan Douglas. Health District Board meeting. And from the health district administrator Luke Davies report, there are currently eleven vacant positions open. And their um revenue is at eighty percent right now. This out, okay, um. They are also beginning a process for capital improvements to the current health district building, which is in East Wenatchee. And um they're looking to remodel and most of this, a lot of ADA compliance, coming into ADA compliance. They're looking to uh currently to remodel their restroom offices. Uh uh improvements to general office, window gap, good switches. No, blah 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 goes on to the tune of one million six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. The health office re- office reporter, um Dr. Wallace. Said that respiratory illness is currently reporting below in the region and healthcare services are working on. Access vaccines and trans- transmission prevention. We are presently seeing a low level of COVID in the E R, the lowest level in the past few years. Influenza influenza is below the national baseline, but it's beginning to increase. Higher than in previous years at this time. R S V is on the rise mainly. In the southern portion of the United States, there have been no regional R S V visits to the E R so far this season. On the twenty-first, uh did the backpacking. Over fifty lunches again and those lunches go to Erns uh. The high school and Shaston Dryden. Um the American Jack, they come out, why? The United Methodist Church Community Supper Thanksgiving Dinner that they had. Is on the twenty-first, there were over eighty people served in those two hours. And it was the Thanksgiving dinner. It was really a lot of fun. There's no charge. There's don't give people money, donations they can. But um I mean, kids running all over and was was a lot of fun. Um uh on the twenty-second, I went to the design review. Board and um they uh okayed two sign permits. And there's a car and I'm not sure how you, a cart. I'm not sure how you pronounce this, but it's F. A H R T. And it's a motorized vehicle.
Germany.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I didn't want to try this. I don't know what came out of my mouth. I tried it. It looks like a word I probably don't want to say out loud. Okay. So the it's a motorized vehicle, D for higher, and it kind of looks like a Bavarian hat. And so it will be interesting to see. Um they the design review board uh members had. A lot of information, they kind of helped out with um, you know, giving them some ideas and so they were pretty excited about the ideas. And then today the downtown steering committee, and I'll leave that to Clint, Steve or Salby. And um. Headed the such study session previous to this and that's my report. Thanks for listening.
Lots of good discussion at the downtown steering committee meeting uh earlier this morning. There was a robust discussion regarding. Um. Under the larger umbrella of. Downtown improvements. Uh one of the thoughts is raising the level of front street to meet the sidewalks. Uh lots of uh thoughts on that conversation as far as, okay, how do we deal with runoff? Uh do we deal with stamped concrete versus pavers? Uh at any rate, there's a support for heated areas in the sidewalk, but. Um we'll need more information exactly on the house and 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 what's, we'll go into that. Um so there's going to be uh the next meeting, a review of a request for qualifications that. Will come before us, we'll look at. Um also, uh wayfinding signage, that was another getting ahead of myself, talked about wayfinding uh signage. This was. Brought about by one of the business owners downtown um on Commercial Street. Who uh was regularly questioned slash arraigned by uh visitors asking about restrooms and. How do we get to the restrooms and uh. The outline the opportunity for better signage, um but it's not so simple because. Uh it's fairly difficult for it to make sense to all sorts of people, meaning you need different signage for pedestrians. As opposed to signage for drivers, but you don't want to clutter things. So how do you make it all work? It's a big project. Um but again, some good discussion on what the aesthetics might look like. Again, uh at the next meeting, reviewing some possible mockups of a new signage and and starting a list of downtown improvement. Ideas and and problem areas where this may be best used. Um also, a conversation about parking, um a lot of it was covered earlier in this meeting, so. I will be redundant, um but it was again the good informational topic of discussion. Uh that concludes this report.
All right, Jason?
Well, I'm glad we're not paid on our performance. Because I have no report. But I will say, uh, the Friends of Leavenworth Pool is kind of an. Ongoing thing and uh let me know if you want to participate in that. I would connect you with Brian Decker or.
You know, anything that I would really report on would be associated with our Rick Williams presentation, because that's. A majority of what we covered in our last parking uh. Meeting and so I don't have I don't have her for.
See.
Um so. I was at the meetings, only meeting I went to was the downtown steering committee. That's been covered. My report's open.
Uh this dives into what Tracy spoke about. On November fifteenth, I met with the Cascade Wellness Committee, which ended up just being me and Sherry Hobbs. And attrition director of the Cascade School District. We discussed ways to get the kids more active. Potentially getting them out before lunch instead of, because they just chow their lunch and throw it away and go outside. So they're going to go outside. So we spoke about a lot of things like giving better breakfast, better food, get more funding, get local chefs to come in and make better meals and give them. Something that they would really rather eat. Cause Sherry agrees that the food that they get now, it could be better. That was it. It's fine.
T bar. So I did attend the lap retreat on the fifteenth and so. We had a great presentation from the marketing team that does a lot of their digital. Marketing and analysis of Ben Oregon and so. Uh and then talked about the Holy Schnitzel campaign that's. For their company, this is one of the most successful campaigns that they've ever had. So they're going to, the lap is going to stick with it for a while. They're shooting new. Uh pictures and and backgrounds and so Kevin's already been on them uh or he's already been on the limits. But one of the interesting things that came up, we talked about adding uh. Some sort of pickleball element to it because. It's the largest growing sport in the nation right now, pickleball. So. I talked to Jessica last week and they're building the largest. Pickleball facility just outside of Phoenix right now. I mean, it's just going to be gigantic. So. Going to tap into that and see if they can get a demographic that wants to come play pickleball and hang out with us for a while. So. Uh and it was good. So there the I had to leave a little early, so I don't know what happened after that as far as. The what they're going to plug into the new campaign, but the Holy Schnitzel campaign is uh. It's strong and so they're going to stick with that. The other thing was that.
Yes.
They they have these, they can track where people, the hits on the website and so on and so forth. The interesting one is that the demographic out of Los Angeles. Is interesting that it's like twenty-five to forty demographic. That's looking at the website or pass-throughs or click-throughs and so. And they don't really know why, but they said, keep it going because. They must have some more disposable cameras, just want to get out of the city, but they're not sure. And Dallas is another one. Dallas is the same kind of thing. That people in Texas are are going onto the website and really looking at Leavenworth or clicking through to look for one or so and so forth. That's interesting how they can, they track everything. They can track. If you go in and out of the lodge. If your cell phone is on.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll track it.
Yeah, oh yeah, so, but it was interesting, yeah.
And so the company that does it, they uh they do a lot of other cities and so uh like Whitefish. Their tourism is down, their traffic is down, or Leavenworth is up. And uh so they're happy to do the marketing for us. Yeah. Cool.
No, it's just amazing. All the ways shouldn't be tracked. Keep your cell phone off.
Yeah, and lunch was good.
Lunch is always.
Lunch is good.
Very good.
Lunch was good. Oh, I talked about shoots, pictures on that, yeah. Part of my report, I have been for the past two weeks a caregiver mostly, so um. With a wife that had a full knee replacement. I left after our meeting last. Over the over the other side and I'm still her chauffeur for.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good. So I don't have a lot to report. So so.
I've been on vacation since our last meeting. I have nothing to report.
Good time. He hurt his back.
We had a good time.
You're behind on email. Putting that out there to the public.
That's Jason's report.
As you should be.
If you didn't get a chance to see it in your packet, behind tab three is the minutes from the last meeting and Andrea Andrea did incorporate. Our written reports. Um I see that mine was in there and I just want to bring it to your attention because it was a report I was excited to report. Uh we did finalize the heavy equipment funding through the local program and we'll be receiving one point five six five million. And the sale of that came in at three point nine one percent for the payback period over ten years. In addition to uh, oh, and I should note, if we were to go try to find traditional bank financing for that right now. Just your normal person, but even an agency with the lower. Uh credit rating than we have, you'd be looking at somewhere between eight and thirty percent. So our three point nine one was a great sell.
Yeah.
Uh in addition to that, our two thousand three loader was at a public surplus auction and it sold for a whopping eighty thousand two hundred. We had it raised at four forty.
Wow.
But we were expecting on. Um I also met with the Friends of Leavenworth Pool. Not last week, but it would have been the Friday before, so after our last council meeting. Uh I spent two hours with a group of about, I think it was four people there. Maybe five. And then Brandy sat to learn as well. And we just talked for two hours about the history of the formation of the P R S A, its mission. How votes have happened, just kind of bringing them up to speed so that they can start assisting. Uh the board with outreach and making sure that we get the word out when we are ready to go for any ballot measures.
You talked about their mission, you said?
I'm sorry, what?
You said something about the mission of the P R S A? Oh yeah, we don't have a mission statement.
Well, we do have a mission right now. We maintain the pool.
I was curious.
We don't have a statement, but we do have a mission.
I hear you. I I agree. I mean.
Uh the timesheets that we've been working on implementing are going live. Uh this Friday, December first, so it will be our test run for all the staff. And in your finance report, which is behind tab fifteen, just want to note that in my did you know column. I have officially activated twenty twenty-four's digital budget book. You look at twenty-four versus twenty-three, they are the same as far as all the text and the content is concerned, because it is a biennial budget. But when you look at twenty-three, you see twenty-three's budget and then historicals behind it. When you look at twenty-four, you see twenty-four's budget and twenty-three's budget and historicals behind it.
Um okay, it's a couple of things. Uh I do want to note that this past weekend, apologies for downtown, the trash got a little overwhelmed. Um I was notified on Saturday morning of of just high amounts of trash and actually heard the chamber. Writing was the third busiest ever recorded based on their football accounts and Saturday was the second busiest ever recorded and it was a.
It was.
The chamber was shocked how busy it was. We were surprised. We were not prepared. So that's on on me for not anticipating that. We, but we, we reacted and got more folks in for Saturday and Sunday night.
Is that the highest? Could you clarify that?
Second or third highest football counts since they started counting two and a half years ago.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, that's what I thought you said.
Yeah, so.
Just for the weekend after Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Yeah, traditionally, it's pretty darn quiet.
So really feel like. It was, it was a shock. Nonetheless, they're going to be down.
Sorry.
No side, please.
All right.
So we've been preparing for the upcoming Village Lights Festival. While we're approving the pedestrian barrier plan by replacing a lot of the equipment with actually ecology blocks. And we manufactured it, created more bollards for that east leg of Front Street. So we're going to have less equipment stage. It's it's safer and it just, it looks more square away than just having random pieces of put it downtown. Um, and it reduces vandalism risk. Um, two more items. I want to give a shout out to Rob and Currie. So Rob Curry is an acting public work skill supervisor. Rick is out recovering from medical procedure. Rob and his crew, they tackled a really challenging water leak two weeks ago on High School Road and this leak was about twelve feet deep. And so they're really widespread outage, but they knocked out a part earlier, quicker than we let folks know, you know, so we, we, uh.
We have a piece of equipment that digs that deep?
Uh, no, we have the factor.
Oh, wow. That's still the trailer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Short term, we're in the vector.
Yeah, that's coming in spring. Oh, okay.
But anyway, so that was a really challenging weekend, but however, the crew, they, uh, they over, they overdelivered and under.
Under promise. That's what we can do.
Overpro. Overdo.
So, uh, yeah, that's just shout out to the crew on that. And lastly, I'm happy to report that we received the additional three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in federal transportation dollars for the Ski Hill Drive Sidewalk Phase Two project. So now the project funding total is just over seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. It's probably for complete sidewalks on Ski Hill Drive from Evans to Pine Street along the west side of roadway. It's a big continuation of the recently completed Ski Hill Drive sidewalk project. So that's steps included there are working with D O T local programs to obligate design funds and select them in Indiana.
Yeah.
And I put.
Want to piggyback because new equipment was mentioned. The sweeper arrived and we are doing a public naming contest. So we put that out on social media. Uh, I'm not sure how else care has gotten word out. Um, but we are accepting, uh, I think we're accepting suggested names through the end of this week, through the fifth, through the fifth. And management teams will, uh, prepare them down at our management team meeting next Wednesday.
Is it on the Facebook page?
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're surplusing the old one?
Yeah, what's worth.
Now's your chance.
It's tied.
Returning.
I'd like to give a shout out to the Parks Department for their, um, handling of the leaves at Osborne. Um, fantastic job, just fantastic. Um, you know, they were there several times. There's been so many years when nobody literally was ever there. And so everybody in the neighborhood had all those leaves in their yard. I haven't had to rake up any leaves at all. And I probably did, I don't know, thirty, forty bags a summer. Because it all felt like it all blew in my yard. But they have done a phenomenal job. I really appreciate it and so do all the neighbors.
Yeah, appreciate the remarks. I'll pass it along for sure.
I'll give a shout out to the young man that drives around downtown and cleans up all the time. He's down there all the time and you can see him in the alley. He's like picking up cigarettes, but he's not, he's nonstop.
Yeah, no, he is, he's good.
He is self-motivated.
Yeah, which is perfect for that position.
Yeah. So give, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, good work.
All right, love it.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, it has been a very busy time, but the number of permits coming in is, uh, finally started to slow down a a smidge, which we're really grateful for, starting to catch our breath a little bit. It's very nice to have a permit coordinator on board and, um, Barb has done a good job getting her feet under her and taking on all the new role roles and responsibilities. We, I can see improvements in our process already happening and communication is better. Our permit tracking system is more functional now that she's on top of, um, notifying staff and departments and our, um, consultants to utilize the permit track system. So anyway, things are starting to feel like they're coming together and that's really great. Um, Amy McCoy is, uh, taking on more of the code enforcement, particularly this time of year. So she is working a couple hours on Friday and quite a few hours on Saturday. And this last Sunday she got called in, you know, the balloon folks that sell the lighted balloons downtown um, have been a violation problem for years. And she's, uh, she did a very proactive thing. She got them a permit, told them where they could be, had all the permit done in two languages. You know, well, English and Spanish, so that, you know, there wouldn't be any confusion and yet there's still confusion. So.
They just walked by City Hall a couple of minutes ago, Will.
Oh, did they? Yeah, she's, she probably jumping her way down there. Uh, she left work early yesterday to go talk to him too. But any case, so we're working with them and and working on options for them and continue to do that. The main point being is that Amy has taken a lead on the code enforcement, not only with the downtown vendors, but across the board and it's should be a noticeable improvement for our festivities and events in our businesses and our visitors, especially as word gets out. So uh, that's all moving forward. That's my report.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, wraps up reports. Now we've got an executive session. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. We're both on. Thanks for attending, everybody.
Nice to come with you. Thanks, Stu. It's good seeing you.
Is that enough time to mention?
Uh, we're exciting for you, Stu. Ask for a motion to recess into executive session for fifteen minutes under R C W forty-two thirty-one ten one B. Property selection, cider acquisition and R C W forty-two thirty-one ten one I pending litigation and possible action to be taken. The move.
Second.
Moved by Sharon and I didn't get it the second. Oh, it was Jason.
Much total time?
Fifteen minutes.
Each.
Each.
Now we should be able to.
We're just going to, we're just. Confident in you guys. Where? Yes.
Back at eight fifty.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the M O U between the City of Lever Worth and the Teamsters Local Union, number seven sixty, party unit. As discussed in executive session.
Second. Move, moved by Jason, seconded by Clint. Any other discussions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimous, Wendy. I take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Third, fourth. All right, all in favor?
My money was on nine o'clock. I just couldn't see it.
Andrea, thanks again.